Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call and order the January 16th, 2007 meeting of the Glendale City Council at 6:01 PM. We have a roll call.
Council members. Mnuchin?
Here.
Mjorion?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Mayor Weaver?
Here. My salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Quintero and invocation by City Clerk Artie Casacca.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yesterday, we marked a nationwide celebration of the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr., a great civil rights leader and a patriot who helped us see the error of our ways and heal the wounds caused by racism. Martin Luther King Jr. once said that "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." Whereas in these chambers, silence is hardly ever lacking, let us nevertheless pray this evening that we shall honor this great man's work by continuing to speak out on those things that matter to our fellow Glendaleans and Americans. Let us pray that the dark past of a racist and divided nation never revisits us in the form of accepted social behavior. Let us, as a community leaders, business people, as residents and citizens of this great country, pray that we learn from the past and work together for a common future, tonight and forever. Amen.
Thank you. And we have your report.
The agenda for the January 16th, 2007 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 11, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
I don't know about you guys, but I feel pretty secure here tonight. For a while, at least. Okay, what is next, please?
Three is presentation and appointments. At 3A is agenda preview for the meeting of January 23, 2007.
This is Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency, there are no business items for next week. For the Glendale City Council meeting, there are a number of presentations and appointments under consent items. We have Director of Glendale Water and Power regarding power systems, analysis system protection study, and training for Glendale Water and Power's engineering and field operations personnel. Under action items, we have a number of items. City manager regarding consideration of an appropriation to contract with East Civis Grants Locator Service. Acting Director of Planning, Planning Department Work Program and Priorities. City manager, special events policy. Chief of Police, changes to the policy and practice of assigning Glendale Police Services to special events requests. And lastly, Director of Parks, Recreation Community Services regarding tennis courts. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, we're waiting for somebody on 3B, so let's go to 4.
4, City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, on presentation, I was going to again ask that we reopen the Design Review Board's nomination period. So far, we have not received any application from a landscape architect. So folks out there, if you are a licensed landscape architect, that's what we're looking, that's the opening, and it's required by the -- our regulations to have one on the board. On the issue of the City Council comments, Mr. Mayor, as you know, under the new legislation that was passed by the state, it requires every time any of us go to any kind of a summit or any kind of a seminar, we have to come back from that and give a report. Although I happen to be on the Airport Commission, it is my understanding, since the Airport Commission is a different organization, we're not required, but I still think, I just want to make sure I don't do anything because you never know. Part of the, this was an aviation conference that was held, and under this conference that happens once a year, generally, the federal legislatures show up to, as far as the Congress and the Senate is concerned, to the conference. It is attended by all the agencies that have authorities, that have the airports, and also is attended by a lot of airliners and the different vendors from the airlines. Some of the items that was discussed, it was mostly talked about, is the security, since the legislatures apparently did not show up due to the fact that apparently the new Speaker of the House wanted to deliver certain items within 100 hours. So unfortunately, we did not get to see Mr. Obestar, which we do know him very well, and he happens to be the new Chair of the Aviation. And there is a new aviation bill, just like the TLU was, that was extended 11 times. We are hoping that this reauthorization bill will pass quicker than the last one with the ground transportation passed, but we did not have that opportunity. The only person who showed up was Mr. Manetta, who gave us a little bit synopsis of what is happening in Washington, and so we got some information on that, but it was very brief. Some of the items that was discussed on the issue with the security was the UK incident that was discussed, and one thing that you need to know, that the UK incident is the issue, was somebody was trying to blow up planes with some kind of a liquid. And what we were told is that the TSA was able to put, discover that, deal with that, and come up with specific guidelines how to deal with this nationwide, and put it into play, and they did it in eight hours. Now, it may not sound a big deal to many of us, but we have to recognize one thing. TSA has 48,000 workers. So within eight hours, you had a program that had to be thought about, worked out, and put into play, and implemented, and have people deal with it within eight hours. So that's a huge task that was done. By spring of this year, they'll be rolling out the TWIC, which basically deals with some of the security issues. The biotechnology was discussed, and is going to be more prevalent throughout. You are going to probably be fingerprinted as you move through airports, and which makes it easier to identify who you are. So it's not just a, they're not going to have just a blanket security system for everyone. They want to identify the bad guys, and in order to identify the bad guys, they kind of have to weed out the good guys. And that's the system that's going to be operated through, and that's going to come through the biotechnology. The issue of privacy was discussed. How do you protect privacy through all this technology? Who has access to it and who doesn't? And that was very important. The 2007 will focus on checkpoint and personal and cargoes. So their main goal is going to be on platforms that they will enact, that you could build on. There was systems, they would build a new system, and then the new one comes out, and they throw the old system out, and they bring in a new one. And sometimes, it costs airports a lot of money, it's costing TSA a lot of money, and Homeland Security. So what they are going to refocus on is to put a common platform that you just modify or build on as years go by, so you're not throwing away the old technology, you're able to modify the technology. And it's not just going to deal with your personal items, like where we go and our bags, it's also going to deal with the cargo, which is a major issue to deal with. The other thing that is going to deal with, we're going to go back to dealing with the backdoor security issues. To some people, backdoor security means all the peoples who have access to the pilot's place, or they're working behind the scene, all the airport people, people who are vendors who are delivering things to the planes, and so on and so forth. There is going to be tightening of some of those rules. One thing that was discussed about the airports, we also discussed international airports, also smaller airports, airports which we are one of them, Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena is a small airport, and they have different needs, and so on and so forth. One thing that it was very important for people to realize, which I found, this is just a little information, that our airport industry, especially the airplanes, they're about $190 billion industry. And just to let you know how big it is, the aircrafts that fly in the United States, that are owned by the United States, is equivalent to all the aircrafts throughout the world combined. So you take all the aircraft throughout the world, and we actually have more than what the rest of the world has. So that tells you the massiveness of this project, how big we are. So that was what we discussed mostly. There was a lot of issues that was discussed, it was basically second guessing, and so I didn't think you wanted to report on that. People were second guessing what the Congress is going to do, and unless you have a congressman there or a speaker who knows what's going to happen, everybody's just guessing at it. So, you know, I don't want to guess at it. So we'll see what happens. All I can tell you, that for the five days we were there, it rained every single day. It rained from 8 o'clock till night. So needless to say, there was a lot of people who were--
Did it rain last time you were there, too?
Yeah, I'm known as the Rain Man. No matter where I go, I take the rain with me.
It didn't rain last--
So there were a lot of people who basically attended the seminars. Too bad none of the legislatures showed up. So, and that's it. That's my report on this item. The other item that, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to talk about, as you know, we do get a follow-up list every other time that we get our future agendas. There are certain items on the follow-up agendas that I think needs to be eliminated since it has been dealt with. Although there are some follow-up agendas, that I have brought this up before, and I think it's getting to be a little bit ridiculous because it's taking way too long. One of the items is, on 43002, there was a request of a report, this is on year 2002, "Report on Policy on City Expenses for Special Community Events." This was requested, it has not come back. It was also requested again on 9506, "Report on How the City Determines the Events to Sponsor and Allocation of Police Use and Police Officers." And this was asked by Mr. Weaver, and that still hasn't come in. These are pretty much the same things, same item was asked for. The other item is the red light camera enforcements. This was asked by Councilman Gomez in 6804. That's 2004, so we're rolling into the third year. I always hear from Mr. Zern saying that it's part of the larger report and larger report, but, you know, we need to get to that report. There are a lot of people who are asking for that. There are some items that have, should be eliminated. Mr. Quintero had asked for staff ethic guidelines. I think we dealt with it, as Mr. City Attorney dealt with it, I think, in the beginning of the year, to deal with some of the modifications of the ethics. But I'm assuming that's what it was. Abstention policy has been dealt with, so this needs to be out. Report of assessment districts, I think we discussed that already, so it's still here, so it doesn't need to be in here. Density waiver on Palm, that has been already dealt with, so that needs to go off. One thing that needs to be dealt with still is, this was asked on 91906, how much the city has saved on working compensation since the new laws have gone into effect, and that was asked by Mr. Quintero. I don't know why we can't just get some kind of an answer to that. That should be a pretty simple item to get there. The two other items that I think they are important, that I was hoping to kind of deal with that in a quick manner. One was the duration of the comments to discuss oral communication, and the other one was City Council response to oral communication. I think those are those items that we kind of need to deal with that. And there was one item that Mr. Quintero wanted agendized, and that is how we run our election in the city of Glendale. And since there is an election coming up, maybe the city clerk can give us a little synopsis of that before the elections are over. That's it?
Mr. McCall.
Thank you. I won't go by a blow-by-blow response on those. The, a number of the items are actually scheduled on the upcoming agendas. The special events policy and the police reserves are on next week's council agenda, so council will receive those. The council meeting protocol is scheduled for February 6, but we'll provide an update onto that--
Yeah, because the numbers are missing.
Yeah, we need to do a better job of getting those in. Thank you.
Thank you.
For bringing those up.
Mahalo. Mr.--
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request to be placed on the future agenda, and I think we're looking at sometime in early February, some room for a report on the DMUs, which are an exciting new type of train service that we're hoping to start implementing from downtown Los Angeles through Glendale, Burbank, perhaps the airport, as well as destinations north. So we're expecting some people from the MTA. MTA staff will provide the report and a short presentation, not very long. And I just want to remind everyone that perhaps in February, we had tentatively set a date, but I'll touch base with you guys shortly on that. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, our City Council comments is over. Let's go back to 3B.
3B is presentation of Los Angeles County Police Chiefs Association to honor Chief Randy Adams as he steps down after his one-year term as the president of the association.
Mr. McCall.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience, I know that initially, there might be concern that there is an extra-large audience to speak on Sleepy Hollow this evening, but actually, we are privileged to have a number of police chiefs and other representatives from the law enforcement community here this evening to honor and recognize our chief, our chief Randy Adams, for his service as president of the LA County Police Chiefs Association this past year. So this evening is a very special evening for Randy and also for the city of Glendale as he has served in capacity. That has definitely honored the city of Glendale this last year. And this evening, a special presentation to recognize this last year and what Randy has achieved and accomplished, and what is a very important, albeit also prestigious role for Glendale's police chief to be in.
So we have the district attorney here. How many police chiefs are here? That's why I said I feel very secure here right now.
It's a very secure evening tonight.
So who's going to carry on first?
I see I have five minutes. It might take slightly more than that, because I'm going to introduce the people that are president, if that's okay.
A short meeting tonight, go ahead.
Great, great. Well, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Don Peterson. I'm the chief of police in Culver City, and I'll be the incoming president, assuming we can't talk Randy out of another year. I'd like to introduce, we have Chief Camerani from Covina PD. He'll be the first vice president. And Jim Hudson, Chief in Alhambra, the second vice president of our association. As you're aware, Chief Adams has been the president of Los Angeles County Police Chiefs for the past year. However, this should be noted, it's a multi-year commitment. You work through the chairs, and in fact, we expect him to stay rather engaged as the immediate past president. I'd like to take a little time and introduce some dignitaries and the chiefs in the room, if that would be okay with you all. First of all, I'd like to start by introducing Tom Sawyer. Tom represents Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger as a public safety liaison. It's a real pleasure to have him here. He traveled down from San Francisco, or Sacramento, I'm sorry, for the meeting tonight. Thank you, Tom. I'd like to introduce our District Attorney of Los Angeles County, Steve Cooley. Thank you for being here very much. Ron Ingalls, retired chief of the Laverne Police Department, who also is the law enforcement liaison for Los Angeles County DA's office. Dominic Rovetti, the chief of the DA's Office investigative team, who's also retired chief from San Fernando Police Department. Chief Bob Sanderson from the Arcadia Police Department. Chief Keith Kilmer from the Bell Gardens Police Department. Chief Tom Hoffel, Burbank Police Department. Chief Roy Campos, Downey Police Department. Chief Rod Lyons, Gardena Police Department. Chief Chuck Montoya, Glendora Police Department. Chief Mike Hefner from the Hawthorne Police Department. Chief Saul Benutas, Irwindale Police Department. Chief Scott Pickwith, Laverne Police Department. Chief Tony Batts, Long Beach Police Department. Chief Richard Lyons, Maywood Police Department. Some of these people may be trickling, and we all had a little bit of a problem with traffic getting here this afternoon. It's a little tough coming from our area. Gary Cusso-Vasquez, Chief Montebello Police Department. Chief Jones Moy, Monterey Park Police Department. Chief Joe Romero, Pomona Police Department. Chief Dave Lawton, San Gabriel Police Department. Chief Tim Jackman, Santa Monica Police Department. Chief Ed Lopez, Baldwin Park Police Department. Chief Tom Sonoff, Signal Hill Police Department. Chief Dan Watson, South Pasadena Police Department. Chief Jim McDonald, Los Angeles Police Department. We have a number of people here from the city of Glendale who I'd just like to note that they're in attendance. They have spent a lot of time making this a success for Randy, I think, during the past year. Assistant Chief Ron DePampa. Captain Ray Eady. Captain Mike Rock. Sergeant Tom Lorenz, I think he's the person that bore a lot of the work here, and Randy might have to take care of him now. So it's a real good deal for Tom, wherever he is. Lucine Akopian, Chief Secretary. I know she's done a lot of work, as well as John Balian, who's done a lot of work to get us all through this past year. As you can see, we have a great turnout here to recognize our distinguished friend and colleague, Chief Adams. He's done a truly remarkable job during his time as president, one that you should all be very proud of. He's helped us navigate through a state election, many political issues, and he's worked diligently on many other issues. But perhaps, I think, one of his most significant accomplishments are the advancements that have been made with regard to radio interoperability within Los Angeles County through the ISIS program. That's something that is truly necessary, and I think is taking us in the right direction. Chief Adams has been very busy during this last year. His activities have included making very, a number of meetings. He's made a lot of appointments to various committees that we all participate in. He's fielded probably hundreds of phone calls, thousands of emails, and he's really been the conduit to all the other organizations that interact with the law enforcement folks here in LA County. As I said, he's attended a lot of meetings, and when you attend meetings, that's taken time away from the city of Glendale and the Glendale Police Department. Our board would like to thank you, because we appreciate all this time, and we would just like to thank you for sharing Chief Adams with us while he fulfilled his role in the LA County Police Chiefs Association. I'd also like to thank the city manager and city staff for being understanding and supportive during the past year. I know how tough it must be to have your chief absent. I thank you all, and the citizens of Glendale in general are very fortunate to have Randy as your chief of police. Randy, can you come up and join us? I should have had you do that earlier, but it wasn't on the script, so I'm sorry. I realize, Randy, it's been a really successful year for you, and we all appreciate your contributions. It's been great. Now it's time for you to enjoy the best position on any board of directors, that's immediate past president. I think you'll do a great job for us. We expect you to stay engaged. We can't talk you into another year, right?
No.
Okay. That was rather definite. So Randy, it's my honor and privilege to present a plaque to you for serving as our president. Thank you very much. Those are really big right there. What are they, 13s? 12s, okay. Thank you all for allowing us to be here. We really appreciate your time.
Question. Did you ever add up how many years of service combined you have sitting out here? It is curious, several hundred, eh?
I would say there's a very high number, and we'll have Tom Lorenz figure that out before he ends his time, because I know Randy would have him do that, and the new board's not sworn in until later this evening, so I think Tom could figure that out for us.
Okay, who's next?
District Attorney Steve--
Oh, I know, I just wonder who's next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I noticed one of my former law clerks is part of the distinguished body. That was twenty, how many years ago?
Too many to count.
You've done okay. I'm here also to present to Randy, but I'd like to give you a little historical perspective on our relationship with the Glendale Police Department. A long time ago, I was the deputy in charge of the passing of juvenile office, and we serviced the needs of juvenile cases that arose out of Glendale. I got in the department very well then. Thereafter, a few years later, I was the head deputy, deputy in charge of the major narcotics section when it was first founded by Bob Filibosian, and we were heavily engaged, the Glendale Police Officers, during a timeframe when Colombian traffickers had tried to make Glendale their home, and they were fought very hard by an excellent narcotic squad. That was all good work done by a great agency before this chief came on board. I met Randy when he was the chief of Simi Valley. That was our first time to come acquainted, and when I heard he was appointed here in Glendale, I was very, very pleased. The city had made an excellent selection. The department continues to meet new and different challenges as they arise in our society in a very professional way. But I think it takes good people as part of the department, being well-led, to make a great department. And we saw some tremendous leadership just about a year ago, when Randy and the Glendale Police Department were the lead agency responding to the Metro Link murder case. In my 33 years as a prosecutor observing things, I've never seen a police agency respond to a critical incident in such a thoroughgoing, professional manner as the Glendale Police Department did on that fateful day. We have lots of where-asses on our scroll, which I hope you hang proudly, Randy, and I do want to commend you for your leadership of the LA County Police Chiefs Association. LA County is unique. We have the Los Angeles Police Department policing about 1/3 of our county's 10 million residents. We have the LA County Sheriff's Department policing about 1/3 of our county's residents. Then we have 46 other police agencies policing about 1/3 of our county's residents. The LA County Police Chiefs Association performs a remarkable professional role in assuring law enforcement interest of that portion of our county. They join together and work together, work with us, and I will tell you, Los Angeles County is better for that organization, and it's better because it was led by Randy Adams this past year. Randy, congratulations.
Thank you.
Randy, I would guess you have some new police chiefs that just arrived, too. Just another here.
Hi, I'm Tom Sawyer. I'm representing the Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger tonight. Certainly a privilege and an honor to do that. Just a little history on myself. On Friday, I was born in Glendale 63 years ago, and it's good to be back.
Which hospital?
PNS. It's no longer--
Well, I know.
Yeah.
Glendale Sanitarium doesn't exist.
I looked for it. I looked for it.
Sanitarium's gone, too.
It's long gone, so.
I see several people were rooting. They were like, oh, right.
Oh, the PNS, alumni from PNS. All the old guys, yeah. Well, it's certainly indeed an honor to be here and representing the governor, and being here for this occasion. Randy's a good guy. I've known Randy for a long time. I previously joined law enforcement 40 years ago, 1967. My first duty assignment was the Glendale CHP office, and I worked here for a while, and I did 23 years of the Highway Patrol, and I was elected sheriff three times in Merced County, California, in the Central Valley. So I've been around for a while. And my job as public safety liaison is to make sure that the governor's well-represented when he can't be somewhere. You've probably heard he had a little leg thing, so he's taken it pretty easy, although he is still-- So he's taken it pretty easy, although he is still doing a lot of work. I'm going to read this letter from the Governor to Randy G. Adams. Chief Randy G. Adams, President of the LA County Chiefs of Police Association. "On behalf of the people of California, I offer you warm congratulations and appreciation as you step down from your position as president. Every day, California law enforcement officers risk their own personal safety to protect the public. As a skilled leader, you've encouraged your fellow officers to provide the utmost protection for the residents of Los Angeles County and the city of Glendale, while also advocating for their professional and personal best interest. For more than three decades, your exceptional record has earned you the respect and appreciation of Californians and your colleagues as President of the Los Angeles County Police Chiefs Association and as chief of police for the city of Glendale. I know that your distinguished service will long be an example for your friends and fellow officers. Please accept my deep gratitude for your service to our state and to your fellow law enforcement officers, and I wish you every continued success in your future endeavors. Signed, Arnold Schwarzenegger, Governor of the State of California." And I want to say, on a personal note, Randy, Andy. Randy did a great job in engaging, politically engaging, in the interest of public safety with the state government over this past year. He was tireless. He was there for us on a variety of issues. He was instrumental with the other associations in bringing about $600 million to public safety from the state's budget. And we really appreciate that as a citizen, as I am now, and as a law enforcement professional. Godspeed.
Randy, I want to recognize your chiefs that just showed up.
Yes. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. It's an honor to be here tonight. And I'd like to introduce, actually, the new chief of Santa Monica, Tim Jackman, is here. The chief of Gardena, Rod Lyons. Dominic Rovetti slid in there, over there, and the side there. And he's the chief DA investigator. And also, another liaison back here, Keith Bushy, is back here. He's Ron Ingles' counterpart in the DA's office. I appreciate and am quite humbled by this turnout of all of my peers to recognize me for actually a labor of love. Being able to have the honor, first of all, of being the police chief of this fine city is a tremendous honor. And then to be selected to lead the other chiefs of the county for a year, and actually as second vice president, and first vice president, and as president, and immediate past president. I guess it's a four-year term altogether of a commitment. But I was very honored and flattered when they asked me to step into that role and to serve in that capacity. Honored from the standpoint that the reason we're so successful with law enforcement in LA County is because of the team that we are. Certainly, each agency, it's important for the chief to muster that department and bring it together as an important team. But then to be able to network those teams together as we are able to do as an association just gives you tremendous satisfaction in knowing that if you ever need to call for additional assistance or help from your neighboring jurisdictions, it'll be there. As you know, crime knows no geographical boundary. So to know that we can call upon our fellow chiefs and actually have someone to consult and to run problems and issues by is the importance of our association. Sometimes it's been said that it's kind of lonely at the top. But if you have an association where you can network together with others that are facing similar issues, many times you can prevent from having to reinvent the wheel. And we do have a tremendous association, a great network of colleagues. They've become more and more supportive in the association. We're getting more and more involvement and activity in the association. And I couldn't be prouder than to represent this team. And I'm very excited that they're together. One of the highlights of this year, and I was starting to feel like I had a problem. I had like almost 14 or 15 chiefs turn over out of that 46 in a one-year period of time. And it wasn't because they were bailing out, because they couldn't take it anymore. Most of them retired and/or moved to another chief's assignment somewhere. So we had quite a bit of transition and new chiefs coming in. And part of the role is to try to make sure that they're welcome and become very involved. And they have. And we're very excited, again, by the team that we have. I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of you for having the trust and the confidence to give me the freedom to be involved in this association. Mr. Starbird isn't here tonight, but certainly he invested that confidence as well. And I thank Mr. McCall and Ms. Beers for the city management's support to let this happen. And also, even though they were all introduced, my command staff, I thank them for their support, because when you take on a role like this, it does cause you to have some additional responsibilities that they have to pick up from time to time when you're involved in the association's business. And Sergeant Tom Lorenz, he's been Johnny-on-the-spot on a variety of different issues and helped us in taking the association to some new levels. So with that type of support, it's hard to not just have a great year. And I think that we did, and we accomplished a lot. And it's to the credit of everybody in this room. And so thank you very much for the recognition. But I feel a lot more comfortable just talking about and recognizing other people, so...
Randy, you forgot to thank the most important person.
Yes, I did. And thank you very much, Mayor, for that.
Do it all the time.
When I turned around to sit down, I would have been right back up here. Let me introduce the most important person in my life, my wife, Kathleen Adams.
I've been there too many times.
We thought we had to have a special place for you to sleep at night tonight. You hadn't done that.
I just have one comment. Geez, I would like to thank all of you for braving our freeway system in LA County to get here tonight. I know that meant some traveling for some of you, like Santa Monica, Signal Hill, Way Out. Very much appreciated. It shows how much respect you hold for our chief. And we know how fortunate we are to have him. I just hope you stick around a few more years.
I would also like to congratulate our chiefs. First, I would like to welcome all the distinguished public servants that are here, so many chiefs and so many years of service to the communities. Thank you for coming to the city of Glendale. It certainly is an honor to have you here amongst my colleagues in our community. And our chief certainly stands head and shoulders above all of us, except for his son, of course, who's about a foot taller than he is. So I've only seen one, so...
They're both tall.
Congratulations, chief. We know you're a great leader. The work you've done with the Police Chiefs Association is certainly reflected by the number of people that are here supporting you and commending the work that you've done. Thank you, and we look forward to having you back in the city of Glendale full-time to continue the work that you've been doing here. Thank you and congratulations.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It certainly is an honor for me and for all the residents of Glendale to have such a collection of esteemed law enforcement officers, to have the Governor's representative, to have our district attorney here today. We're proud that you came to Glendale. We're very proud that you came to honor Chief Adams. And it certainly is a testament to the respect that he's earned by having you all here today. And what Chief said goes. If we can help you in Glendale in any of your issues, either through the chief's department or any other department, we're here to cooperate. And we're all on the same page in terms of making this a better county to live in, safer for all of our families and our children. And it was certainly great that our chief led you the past year. So thank you very much, chief, and all of you who did travel some distances.
Mr. Quintero.
I want to congratulate you, Chief Kathleen, and the staff, both the management captains that are here in the rank and file. And then obviously commend all of the chiefs that are here, the district attorney and his staff. I have lots of relatives in law enforcement, including district attorneys. And I know what a rough career it is. I think sometimes, on the outside, it appears to me much easier than it is. But both for the professionals that are here tonight and their families, it's not easy being in law enforcement. So I commend you all. And we have a wonderful chief. And we're looking forward to having him hang around for a long time.
Mr. Najarian.
Chief, I also want to congratulate you. The mere fact that there are so many distinguished chiefs from different cities have come here speaks volume for you and the respect that they have for you. I am happy for you that your one year is over, because I know the amount of time you had to put in there was amazing. And on the other hand, I'd like to congratulate Kathleen. He has no more excuses not to do the honeydews. So now he can do them. And I'd like to have a big round of applause for all the chiefs that came here. We really do appreciate it. You do a great job for your own cities. So our city doesn't have to deal with some of the crime issues, because you catch them at your own cities before they cross the border.
Now, Randy, you're the third chief that I've had since I've been here. And you're the best. Just want you to know, at least my opinion.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate your comments. I'd also like to thank our district attorney, Steve Cooley, for taking the time to come out and make a personal presentation. He's also going to join us at a dinner after this to actually administer the oath...
Dinner after this?
Yes, you're all invited.
Okay.
Where are you going?
He's going to administer the oath of office to Chief Don Peterson, who's the incoming president. And having a supportive board, as I did with Don and also with Kim Marini, made a big difference. And I'd like to thank them. I'd also like to thank Mr. Sawyer for taking the time. Having a liaison to the Governor's office makes a big difference and really does help us when we have issues in LA County that we can bring forward to the state level. He's been there for us, and we appreciate that. So thank you all, and have a great evening.
Congratulations.
Tom, I guess zip...
Johnny on the dot, is it?
Don't say a word where you're going.
Zip on the dinner.
That's right. Don't say a word where you're going. Wherever you're going, have a good time. Hope it's in Glendale. Chiefs, if you'd like to quietly walk out. I know you want to go and eat. Thank you, Mr. Cooley. I'm not feeling insecure. I figure that's about 1,000 years of police experience going out that door. Forty-six cities. Figure at least 20 years apiece.
Nice job.
You're approaching 1,000 years.
They sure do.
Now, if some of you would like to shift to the other side of the room, so the building doesn't tilt, you're free to do so. They left very quietly.
I know. It's a deal.
Okay. Mr. City Clerk, let's go on with the next item.
Five is consent items, including minutes to follow in our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Okay, have a card on 5B.
Move consent.
Second. Moving seconded. Roll call, please.
Council members, Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Please read 5B under the record.
5B is Director of Public Works regarding Stalker Street Rehabilitation Project, Phase One. Motion awarding the construction contract to Sully Miller Contracting Company in the amount of $4,755,287.75 and rejecting all other bids.
I have one card. Dr. Richard Espirito, two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Dr. Richard Espirito. Mr. Zern, I'd like to commend you for putting into your proposal tonight the fact of your ADA consideration, and also the fact that you were concerned about the trip on the sidewalks, because the sidewalks were not in the best condition. But between Dorothy and Central, that street on both sides, the north side and the south side of that street, is atrocious. There is at least 17 different places between Dorothy and Central on the north side or the south side of the street that need to be repaired. Between Dorothy and Stalker, great place. I don't know if it was a fact that Mr. Najarian had his campaign headquarters right close to there.
I'd like to leave the neighborhood better after I'm through there.
It's outstanding. But I'd like to know, when will we take in consideration fixing the rest of that area? Due to the number of senior citizen disabled people who do walk to Ralph's Market into those other areas, there's several Armenian grocery stores that I know a lot of people travel to. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion on 5B?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Let me just ask for clarification. We're doing the next phase, aren't we?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian. It's about 90% designed. We're hoping to complete it, or at least initiate it, next fiscal year.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Mr. Menuchyan.
Yes, I did have a question, just a curiosity question on 5E, where we designated authorized representatives for FEMA and OES disaster assistance. Why, and we're designating the city manager, assistant city manager, and the acting director of finance, why do we need to authorize anyone? Shouldn't they be authorized already as city managers?
This is a requirement of FEMA. Actually, Bob Franz was the previous individual who was authorized in this. And Ron Ayler is in looking into this and needing to declare to FEMA who the authorized representative's going to be in consultation with legalists, felt having those three representatives would really serve the city's interests best, and we could move quickly in the case of the absence of any one of those people.
Okay, thank you. What is...next, please.
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, Craig Essa, is that it? Followed by Dr. Richard Espirito.
Good evening. My name's Craig Essa, and I'm here today because of the damage that was done to my car from the pro-poor road construction on Montrose Boulevard. I filed a claim with the city of Glendale that was denied. I have here an 18-page document that has correspondence, alignment records, receipts, photographs of the location, the damaged part. As stated in local newspapers, the construction inconvenienced many people in the Montrose area. In my opinion, the road should not have been opened through traffic. On July 15th, the median of the road was closed, and traffic in both directions was directed on Montrose Avenue to the edge of the streets. The cement was laid down just west of Waltonia for the bus stop, but the asphalt for the rest of the road was not paved. The cement and the unpaved asphalt were uneven, about six inches apart. As a result, my car got wedged between the two, between the cement and the asphalt, when driving west towards Ocean View. I heard a loud bang on impact. That was the sound of cement hitting metal. I ended up with $1,500 of damage to my car. Would have been almost $3,000 had I not found a replacement at a junkyard. The tire was blown out. The wheel hub assembly needed to be replaced, as was the suspension. I'm confident a city project plan would validate. The median was closed, and cars were forced to drive near the unsafe cement and unpaved asphalt on July 15th. The tow truck driver from Lockhurst on a tow stated I was the fifth call that day for repair for a tow on Montrose. I'm here to see how I'd go about getting the city to take responsibility for the damage to my car.
So this area is in the county? It's not even our contract?
Not, sir.
It's the county of Los Angeles.
It's the county of Los Angeles? When I received a note from the city, it didn't state that.
I believe it does, actually. There is a copy of letter attached to the packet that you've just provided us, which notes that the city of Glendale... Well, it doesn't say which. It says the city of Glendale's not a proper party to this action.
It left me confused since I was asked for supplementary information.
The alley below Florenzita is the dividing line between the county and the city, except for the parking lots, which are carved out and belong to the city. So this is definitely in the county. I've driven it during the construction, too.
Okay.
So you'd have to-
You're saying they need to take this up with the county of Los Angeles?
The county.
Or the supervisors.
Yeah. Mike Antonovich's office.
Mike Antonovich's office?
Yes.
Yeah. So you don't Xerox them again.
Okay. I can do that.
Yeah. You'll meet him.
Has six months expired from the...
No, I just received a note from the city last week. It was... It occurred on July 15th, so it was six months ago that it occurred.
Hey, sorry, we couldn't help you here, but we escaped on this one.
About six months may have expired from the time that he's submitting this to county.
Maybe you maybe need to file a request for a late claim.
Yeah, so-
Request for a late claim.
Yeah.
And we can't provide legal advice here, but certainly that's something you may need to look into. I don't have all the details in front of me, but it appears that there may be an issue with the statute of limitations.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Richard Aspiritu, followed by Nancy Kent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff. I am Dr. Richard Aspiritu. In the 1800s, there was a French writer. His name was Alexandre Dumas. In 1844, he wrote a book, and the major character in that book was Edmund Dantes. For the next two months, I will play the role of Edmund Dantes. I'd also like to, tonight, commend Chief Randy Adams and one of his officers, who unfortunately, right after Thanksgiving, after Christmas, came to my front door, knocked on the door, and informed me and my mother, who is 92, that one of our cousins passed away of a heart attack. He did an outstanding job. He's extremely professional. And I'd also like to thank Chief Adams for instituting the ADA sensitivity training for the police officers here in the city of Glendale. However, last week, at the Housing and Redevelopment Agency, I submitted a letter to the city council staff and members of the housing authority regarding the Miraloma project, which is an affordable housing project, 44 units. My question was very simple, and it was directed by the city clerk to Mr. Peter Zovak. I wanted to know the number of disabled housing facilities there was going to be, and also the number of visually disabled facilities for the visually disabled. HUD and the Fair Housing Act of the United States has specific guidelines, numbers. That request was sent on to the architect, developer, contractor, and as of this date, I still have not received an email back saying, "How many facilities?" Real simple. How many numbers? That's an interesting question. I thought for sure the staff, or the consultant, or the contractor would be able to give me a simple number. The other issue, Mr. Najarian, you and members of the staff worked diligently to get some work done to take care of the 201 line that stopped running up and down Chevy Chase. I commend you for that. And we, the city of Glendale, also picked up two minivans, numbers 497 and 697 and 620. Just recently, bus number 697 was given to the YWCA. I'd like to know why. And because in our project that we had here that our consultants gave us, there was a large number of projects and minivans that were supposed to be used, namely on the number nine and 10 lines, and that we're supposed to acquire new buses for the one and two lines and all this other stuff. Since we did get another bus, why are... And we're going to be doing this changes, why did we give away a bus? I thank you for your time and consideration, and in the near future, I'd like to have an answer to these questions. Thank you very much.
Are you looking at me?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the short answer to that is that the vehicle didn't belong to us. Belongs to MV. They had already promised a donation to the Y. They simply put it into use immediately because we expedited the takeover of that line, so it allowed us to put that into use immediately. But they had long ago promised that van as a donation to the Y. It's never been our property. We haven't owned it. We were fortunate they had something. Gave them enough time to find a backup.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nancy Kent, followed by Leon Meyer.
My name's Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of Glendale. Mayor Weaver, council members, and staff, and others, I would like to invite you to a free film screening this Saturday, January 20th, 2:00 p.m., at the Montrose Library, 2465 Honolulu. The film is 9/11: Citizens' Commission: An Open Inquiry Into the Attacks of September 11th. We're showing the first 94 minutes of a six-and-a-quarter-hour DVD. This citizens' inquiry was held, excuse me, in New York City in 2004, and was chaired by former Congresswoman Cynthia McKinney. At this inquiry, the focus was on governmental actions and statements. There was zero discussion of questions about physical evidence, no discussion about things like the buildings collapsing. The segments we'll be showing are about concerns regarding the government's 9/11 commission report, such as the federal government's lengthy resistance to having an independent investigation, and some of the conflicts of interest of the members of the 9/11 commission. There's also a report about governmental actions regarding air quality in New York after the attack. There'll be audience discussion after the film, and this is not a City of Glendale event. It's sponsored by Glendale Public Awareness About 9/11 Questions, and the library room was rented for this. For information, call 242-4320. Again, that's this Saturday, January 20th, 2:00 p.m. at the Montrose Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Meyer, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. My name is Leon Meyer, and I'm here on behalf of the friends of Glendale Public Library. Next Tuesday, we're going to have John Dobson, founder of the Sidewalk Astronomers of America. He's the inventor of a powerful economical telescope that has been used by millions of people around the world. He's world famous, and we're lucky to have at that meeting next Tuesday, the head of media relations at NASA Jet Propulsion Laboratory of Pasadena, whose name is Blaine Baggett. And Blaine Baggett has said this about John Dobson. "He is on a spiritual quest, as well as a scientific one. I deeply respect the simplicity of his life, which is played out in the design of the Dobsonian telescope. That was a tremendous achievement." Blaine Baggett will be there to join us. And if weather permits, there will be a demonstration available to our children, ourselves actually, on the parking lot of the universe. The telescopes will be there. And if weather doesn't permit the telescopes to show anything, we have a range check for the January 30th. But whether rain or shine, next Tuesday, James Dobson will be at the Glendale Public Library, 7:00. Now tomorrow night, I've already talked about this a couple times already, tomorrow night, Varkas Yagayan will present... He's the author of the case of Misaktarlokian. Misaktarlokian was one of two Armenian Ottoman youngsters, youths, who assassinated the... He assassinated the Minister of Interior, the former Minister of Interior of Azerbaijan. And there was another young Armenian Ottoman who assassinated the minister, the former minister of Turkey.
You need to give the years on those.
Pardon?
You need to give the years on those.
I will. I will. This was 1921. This was 1921, and the trials were held shortly after, one in Germany and one in Turkey, Istanbul, or actually, yeah, it was Constantinople at the time. Now, these two books, the one that's just been... The second one has just been published recently, so both books are going to be available to be bought, to be signed by Mr. Yagayan. The event is being co-sponsored by the Armenian Bar Association and the Glendale Bar Association. And there was an article in the news press today in which Mr. Yagayan was interviewed, and he had a couple interesting things to say, and if I could indulge you just for a second. First of all, he wants to make it clear that the larger story of the genocide should reach a wider audience outside of the Armenian community. And what are you saying, and what I've always said for all of the events, is we want everybody to be there, to feel free to come and join in the study, and the discussion, and the event itself. Interesting enough, to talk, tell you about how history works sometimes, without a Jewish lawyer by the name of Raphael Lemkin, they would not have been able to discover the archives of the first trial that took place in Istanbul. And Varkas Yagayan mentioned this when he was interviewed by the news press, because he thought it was appropriate to do so. So that's an event tomorrow. If you haven't made arrangements yet, please do so. The president of the Glendale Bar Association will be there. The president of the Armenian Bar Association will be there. Of course, I'll be there to introduce the speakers. Now, if I can take my hat off as a representative of the library, and since I won't be here next Tuesday, I would like to just spend a few seconds to talk about the Fremont tennis courts. I happen to be a tennis player. I'm a senior. There's a lot of seniors and less-than-seniors who play tennis at the Fremont tennis courts. They're public. I hope they remain public, and I hope this present structure in which they're administered remains the same. And I just wanted to add my voice to any voices you might hear next Tuesday about keeping the status quo, so to speak, on those tennis courts. Thank you very much.
Milano, followed by Al Hoffman.
I have flyers for anybody who's interested in these events.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, city staff, Mr. Scott Howard. My name is Herbert Milano. I'm here today because tomorrow afternoon, we have scheduled a settlement, a mandatory meeting, to try to achieve a settlement agreement with regard to the lawsuit that I have filed against the city of Glendale with regard to the environmental impact report on the downtown specific plan. I never imagined in my wildest dreams that I would be standing here before you, having filed a lawsuit against my own city on the issue that we want a truthful document be presented to the public. And that is my contention, that the environmental impact report is not a truthful document, that the statement that it says with regard to developed parkland, that we can increase 10,000 people in the center part of town, and that the developed parkland cannot be mitigated, that the shortage cannot be mitigated, I hold that that statement is untrue. I respectfully disagree with the conclusions made on that environmental impact report. The extreme shortage of parkland south of the 134 freeway has been documented extensively for over 30 years in the general plan, in the land use element, in the developed open space element, in the 1996 Greater Downtown Strategic Plan, and in the 2000 parking recreation open space report on the Blue Ribbon Panel of esteemed residents of the city of Glendale who came to the same conclusions. And this, the purpose of the lawsuit is to have the city adhere to a truthful document that we can all live with. I believe that that shortage can be mitigated by an expansion of our Central Park. And I have given my attorney instructions, that it is my intent to drop the lawsuit when I find definitive and tangible objectives to increase our Central Park, because it's the last major open space that we have, and we cannot afford to lose it. I have also mentioned that it has been my objective that the increased congestion that we experience in southern Glendale must also be mitigated, and that the environmental impact report just gives us a future promise to do something in the future, and I would like to see thresholds and definitive measurements of the minimum tolerable speed between two points in the various different major thoroughfares that we have here in Glendale. What is the minimum tolerable speed that we will accept on Bryant Boulevard between Colorado and the 134, or on Glendale Avenue between Colorado and, you know, and all the way up to the college? These issues have to be addressed in a tangible manner that we can measure year to year. I know that I cannot compel the city to do this, but in the past, we have received so many documents, so many EIRs that are untruthful, and unfortunately, the only alternative to the public is to file a lawsuit. The city, as far as I know, has not lost a single lawsuit. I think they have a couple in the last 10 or 20 years. I know it's very hard to win such a case, but this case has so much documentation and a background of dereliction, of attention to the needs of open space. I never imagined I would be standing here before you clamoring for green open space. So you have it there, that for tomorrow, it's not going to be a simple presentation of acquaintances and mild verbiage. I have instructed my attorney to look carefully to present to you a settlement that is tangible. And I believe that we can do it with regard to opening Central Park to maximize its space. I thank you very much.
Al Hoffman, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, councilmen, and staff. Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. At our last Glendale homeowners' courting and council meeting, the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association presented their draft resolution for a view-protection ordinance, which they plan to carry forth to the city council. In that meeting, the courting and council supported their efforts. In the news press article about that meeting, it stated that we were drafting or making an ordinance. That is not true. I appointed Leila Ramirez as a chairperson for a committee to draft a resolution that we will present to the city council in support of a view-protection ordinance, but we do not draft the ordinance. So I just want to make that correction. I guess you've all been aware of all the articles in the news press as of late about view-protection and all the building that's going on everywhere. And we are very enthusiastically supporting this. We're getting a lot of support. I've read there must be nearly 30 articles written by people supporting some form of view-protection. Now, that view-protection has to be dealt with. One of the things that we did state, or Verdugo Woodlands made clear, that it was not supposed to tear down trees and things of that nature for view-protection. And it relates to more than just looking out over somebody's house down over a view. It relates to what you see in your neighborhood. It covers a lot of things. Mansionization is a term. I found it interesting, I saw an article in the Daily News, Tahunga has a mansionization ordinance. Tahunga, which is sort of this eclectic collection of homes up there, they have a view-protection ordinance. Burbank has them, Pasadena does. We're the only city around here that does not have such an ordinance. So I believe it is in- So I believe it is important that this is going to happen, and we hope to have a good ordinance drafted someday by the city to address this. I think we're getting a lot of activity now at our meetings, and that I get, about all the different homeowners, I get calls and letters and everything about this issue. And it appears that there's enough things happening now that people are getting concerned. I believe the problem we have is the DRBs do not have a really clear direction on what they should or shouldn't approve. And I believe a view protection ordinance would go a long way into giving them the right guidelines so they could deal with these issues. Unfortunately, they approve these things, these projects, and then it's up to the people in the neighborhood that are affected by it to appeal it. It should be the other way around, the applicant should be rejected and let them do the appealing, since it costs money to appeal, and it always burdens the neighbors and the people that are trying to appeal it, that they have to pay the appeal cost. So I think it's worthwhile endeavor, we've noticed, I've noticed in the coordinating council, there seems to be more activity. Years ago, we had a lot of support, we had six, seven homeowners associations, we filled up our meeting rooms, people all concerned about Oakmont 5. When that went away, and that was resolved, people demonstrate the apathy that they have, that if the problem isn't in their backyard, they really don't get excited about it. But the minute it's in their backyard, then they want something to be done. And our organization is trying to get everybody together so that we can work as a unit to help make these things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and my fellow citizens out there in Glendale. Something that Mr. Yusefian said was very interesting, that everybody has to be fingerprinted when they go through the airports or whatever. In other words, you know, I always understood that you were innocent until proven guilty. In this case, it seems that you're a bad guy until they prove that you're not. I think that's a little bit of a reverse for our American freedoms. It's, to me, absolutely astounding, and it's another one of our freedoms that we have lost, due to all the problems with terrorists and so forth and so on. But isn't that what it comes down to? I think it's very interesting. Now, going on to, from that situation, is, some of you know and some of you do not, that my grandson came to live with me a few months ago, and he turned 18 after he came to live with me. And so, it fell on me to try to get him into school, to get his high school diploma, do everything that should have, that he couldn't do for himself. In other words, here's a young man who grew up in La Cañada, and, you know, our young people, sometimes, they're not really at 18, you and I, well, I did, was out working, had worked for probably five or six years already. These young people are not, that live in this kind of a community, they're in a different element altogether. Now, what ended up happening when I tried to get him into school, he needed ID, okay? He needed birth certificate, he needed another ID. And the only way that we could get him registered was the fact that I am involved with the college, I went, I talked to them and showed them, you know, had to do a notary thing and the whole thing. Well, that was fine and dandy, okay? Well, how do you get a birth certificate? In his case, he was born in Pasadena, at Huntington. And I was fortunate that I could go to the Pasadena Health Center, and they give it. It's one of the only cities that does, no other does, you have to go down to Los Angeles, go way down, whatever, and it's three or four months. I couldn't wait that long, because he needed it now to, you know, go to school. If you want a job, you have to have your social security card. He didn't have that. He knew the number, that's not good enough. So we said, okay, well, we'll go up to the DMV and get California ID, California from the License Bureau. He needed two IDs to get that. So we were, here we are, running in circles. I, on and on, his passport was the same way. I went and got his passport, I felt it would be a good way for him to have identification. I mean, it's absolutely amazing, it's like he landed from the moon, you know, and trying to go through getting all these things together. And out of all this, what my thought is, you know, the one document he could get without any proof of anything, was he could get a ballot, and he could vote. And I thought, well, what? And I've, we've come across this before, there's been a lot of discussion about it. And the reason you can do that, you walk in, and it's a self-certified, yes, I am a citizen, and nobody checks on it. And you cannot ask, when they come up in the polling booth, are you a citizen? Or even anything about what, where you're listed, or certified, or anything. I have friends that got in trouble because they were working as, on the polling booth, and they asked some simple question about the address, or why do you have two ballots, or, you know, in a different name at the same address, this type of thing. And she ended up being sued, that dragging, that she had violated some law. Now, amazingly enough, here's my grandson, who has lived here his whole life, and I do, I got his, the proof of his birth and his social security and various, he couldn't get, he couldn't get a bank account. He couldn't deposit money into the bank without having two IDs. I mean, it's unbelievable, he couldn't go to a gym, he wanted to go to a gym with his friends, and they said, show us your ID. But yet, you can go in and get a ballot and vote without having to prove who you are or what you, where you live even, or whatever. Now, we know a lot of this, we've heard it before, and we've seen it before, there's verification of what I'm saying. But amazingly enough, here we are, as I said, you know, you're a bad guy until you're proven a good guy. And so here, we need to have a look at some of these things about our voting, and about the balloting. It's, half of our city could be voting illegally, and where would that put us? With councilmen that are voted in illegally? Okay, that's my thought for today. By the way, Mr. Weaver, thank you very much, Chris Baxter was wonderful, from the planning department, I spent two hours with him, going over the plans for that banquet hall, or, no, no, quote, unquote, that nightclub, they tell me, it's a nightclub. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to that. Margaret, the current law states that if you're registering to vote as a first-time voter, it is mandatory that you show some sort of valid California identification, either an ID or a driver's license, without it, you cannot register to vote. If you do not have that, whereas in the past, you could provide the last four digits of your social security number, the current law says that you have to provide your full social security number. So if your grandson could remember his social security number and they have an ID, he wouldn't be registered, after they verified that he was indeed a citizen, then yes, he would be able to get his ballot. The sum law you referred to, as far as, you know, rather dismissively, is the law of the United States of America, and passed by United States Congress, and it's federal law, to which we as states and as municipalities have to adhere to, and will continue to adhere to, until otherwise dictated by our leaders in Washington, DC.
Thank you. That completes our communication.
I want to salute that. All right, well put, well put, Artie. I think it would be improper to suggest that we have fraudulent elections, or a possibility of a fraudulent election could occur. I know that the city clerk's staff is gearing up and is going to ensure the utmost integrity of the ballots, the voting, and the tabulations.
And our process is open to the public, mayor and council members, anyone is welcome to come in, in our office and observe us at work and my staff at work, and we will be providing a report on how the elections are run when we come to you with what we would like to call as appropriation, the money to run this upcoming election.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Next is adoption of ordinances, since there isn't an action items. At 888 is Director of Information Services regarding recommendation for the purchase and implementation of a replacement citywide land management system from EdgeSoft Inc. At 881 is motion awarding the contract to EdgeSoft Inc. in the amount of $1,130,000 and authorizing a 10% contingency of $113,000 for a total not to exceed $102,43,000. I'm sorry, $1,243,000.
Mr. McFaul, you will explain the rationale for why we should spend this amount of money.
Actually, what I will do is introduce Ms. Beckham, who is our information services director.
Will explain.
Who will explain the, actually, what has been a number of months of work by Ms. Beckham, her staff, and all departments that are currently using the land information and related systems, and why they believe, one, it needs to be placed, and secondly, how EdgeSoft was selected.
Right ahead.
My name is Imelda Beckham, and I'm the Director of Information Services. Mayor Weaver, members of the council, we are here to request that you approve our recommendation for the purchase and implementation of EdgeSoft's ELMS, the Enterprise Land Management System. And before I give you the rationale for that recommendation, I would like to let you know that here in the audience, we have practically the entire selection team that has been working on this project for the last eight months. And I would like to ask them to stand up and be acknowledged, since they have put so many hours into this. Would you please stand?
Paul, we just stand up.
Nobody wants to take blame.
As you can see, the, it includes, thank you. It includes representatives from multiple departments, the departments that ultimately will be users of this system, fire, planning, public works, community development and housing, GWP, police, fire, and information services.
And we put this money into the budget?
We, yes, with, yes, it was, it was placed into the budget, through the budget process. And this system is a replacement of the, of the KIVA system that the city is currently using to process permits and requests for services. The system is a key component, together with the geographic information system, is a key component of the city's CSI initiative. And the CSI initiative, basically CSI stands for City Services Interface, and this initiative is aimed at improving and streamlining the permit-related activities, so, including building and safety, planning, requests for services, inspections, code enforcement, and so forth. I will not go into details of the selection process unless you want me to, but it was a comprehensive selection process, that it was a full-blown RFP process, and that resulted in the selection of EdgeSoft, EdgeSoft's ELMS system as the, as this, a system that is expected to give us the greatest benefits to meet the needs of the city in terms of permit-related activities and land management at the, at the least cost. We anticipate multiple benefits out of this implementation, and we list them all in the staff report. Let me just touch on a couple of them that are very key to the community, to you and the community. We anticipate that the system provides a centralized database that, that all users can access through the web to view information, all activity projects, activity related to a specific location, it's location-centric system. So we expect these, the integration of these, of these data, if you will, to allow departments to work in harmony and coordinate better in processing permits and improving service to citizens.
You can't do that with the KIVA system.
Well, it has some limitations, up until now has served the city, but there are some things that it cannot do right now. It has to be complemented with all kinds of manual processes that then prevent, and manual records that prevent the sharing of the data across multiple.
So the new system will automate everything comprehensively?
Yes, comprehensively, and make the data available to, to all.
Mr. Yusefian.
This is a software system?
Yes.
Is it just software, or it goes with hardware? Because KIVA, I know the inspectors show up at the inspection site, they have a little handheld computer that they do things, that works with KIVA system. Does this require that hardware to be changed, or that hardware can be modified to work with the software?
We have, we have the hardware that is going to be needed to, the software, as proposed, will work on our existing infrastructure.
Hardware, okay. And is there going to be training provided to the users, the city users, to implement and use this software? It's a, it's a whole different software.
It's a whole different.
You're going from one platform, completely a different platform, everybody's trained on KIVA, now, all of a sudden, you got this other platform. In this amount, I see a little bit of training in here, is there a training cost involved?
Yes, there is.
Does it train everybody, or just, I mean, a little bit of it?
No, it's, it's training all users of the system. And as a matter of fact, we, we are, we are making provisions for additional training, because we think that it is critical for the success of the project. So we, we are going beyond the initial training.
I also see that the, this does not include any cost of maintenance. It's a service cost excluding maintenance, a service cost excluding maintenance. Now, my question on, on maintenance is, as part of the consultant's implementation of this system, how much time do they have to install the system, debug the system, and what do we ask them, how much time do we ask them to give us, to make sure that the system's working before they hand it in?
Basically, I don't have the exact numbers, I will ask our, the, the project manager to step to the podium.
You want to know that?
And give us a.
I want to know the turnkey time, is it taking a year to do this?
Oh.
Is it taking two years to do this?
I think she can answer that.
Basically, the way we structure the project is in four phases, so, elapsed in over two years, 24 to 36 months, but let's stick with two years, 24 months. Within that timeframe, you will see at the, by July of this year, you'll see the first set of functionality, of function, make, being made available to users, and the first round of users trained, and having tested the system, the system goes live, as we say, goes into full production mode. So then, we continue working in subsequent modules, so planning goes first, the, the planning functions. And then, we move to building and safety, permit processing, and code compliance, service requests, and so forth.
And what happens in between? You do planning, and everybody else is still in KIVA?
Yes.
And what happens to the transfer of information from this new system into, let's say, building and safety that's in the KIVA system? Are you able to do this, or do you have to run a parallel?
We have to reconcile it.
How do you do this?
We have to reconcile it, and we made provisions, we don't have the, the detailed plan on how we will do that, but we have had extensive discussions.
As a consultant, do this?
Yes, with a, with a consultant.
As part of their deal?
Yes, it's part of the budget and the request and the plan.
So in the end of the second year, all of the systems have been put in, all the data that it took two years to get, everything is integrated and it's there, there is no backlog of information that we have to go back and put in because somebody did not implement it properly?
That is correct.
Seamless transition.
Yes.
You're getting nods from the audience, too.
Well, you know, I've gotten a lot of nods from the audience in the past with some of our, you know, earlier versions of programs that we had. And after everybody nodded up and down, we spent several million dollars, implemented it, and everything started falling apart. And we kept getting all these little things on our computers, saying the system is down, system is not working, system is down, and all this, and we spent even more money in patches and all this stuff. So I want to cover everything now, before we walk in there. So that's why I'm asking all these questions.
I think, Mr. Yusefian, the only thing you're going to get tonight are the odds and the yes it will happen. We're not going to be able to get beyond that, where you think we may end up going. So you're going to either have to trust the people that are nodding their head, or, I don't know. Mr. -- Mr. Manukian.
Yes, I, I understand the questioning of Mr. Yusefian, because we've had similar problems with some of the software that we purchased before, and the report that you have prepared, it says this software provides a tightest integration with the rest of the city's software environment, including PeopleSoft, GIS, Exchange, and FileNet's document management system. PeopleSoft is pretty much on the way out, we really never implemented it completely. GIS, we don't really use that often. The Exchange, every software has to be, has to work with the Exchange because it's our network, and the FileNet was never really implemented, so, as far as I know, and I don't think Kiva's been used to its full extent. So, what, PeopleSoft is being replaced by Oracle, sooner or later, we're going to replace it, because Oracle purchased that software, and after a couple of years, they're not going to continue it. FileNet is really not implemented to the degree that it should be, and the rest, the softwares are always halfway or not completely implemented. What guarantees do we have that this software, even though we have a number of old software that you're tying, you're trying to, you're going to try to tie into, what guarantees do we have that this software is going to work? Because this is another, I just see another PeopleSoft in this, another million and a half.
Proprietary.
Right, and, and then, we're gonna.
A million and a half.
Once, once we go into it, we can't pull out anymore because we've invested a million or so, we have to continue it. What guarantees do we have that this is going to work?
Would you like to respond, Mr. McFaul?
I'm good to do.
To the extent that you're saying it's going to work?
I think we'll, we'll do a two-part response. I'm going to respond generally, because these are excellent questions. What I can do is assure you that Imelda and this entire team, and the consultant, in fact, the consultants who made a variety of presentations, have been not just asked these questions, but grilled about the, these questions, not only understanding the council's going to ask them, but we have all been there and done that. So, I'm going to answer, so I'd like to address your, these very excellent questions in, in a couple of parts. First of all, looking at, at PeopleSoft at all, the applications that you're talking about. At this point in time, PeopleSoft is robustly installed and operating in the city of Glendale. In fact, pretty much the best, by our account, and looking at, at other PeopleSoft accounts, we are probably one of the few cities that actually mandated PeopleSoft do, to do what they said they were going to do. We have implemented more modules than, than actually any other implementation that we are aware of, and it did cost us to do that, but on the other hand, we are now benefiting from it. And while, and while there may be some operational complexities to it, because whether it's Oracle, PeopleSoft, or any of them, they are simply very complex systems, it is actually functioning well. So, in going to a new application system, a next generation, a web-based generation of a, of a land management system, such as being proposed here, it is, it is in our best interest and in pursuing our own due diligence, we have to pursue applications that are, in fact, linked to all, all of these other applications that are already in place, in particular, the ones that we feel do have a continued lifespan. If we migrate ultimately to Oracle at some years in the future, we're still using Oracle-based applications that have linkages there. You have, you have hit, though, on what is the challenge of any software application and that, applications and linking them all together, is that they all have different life cycles. And so, what we're trying to do, and in looking at this, is look at applications that have the greatest ability to link to what we currently have, the best-known information we have, and also seem to have the best architecture to, to link to future, literally unknown applications. Our hope, actually, is that, for example, with the PeopleSoft, that because of the architecture and because of the requirements of the RFP of, of having some linkages that simply weren't, that we certainly weren't capable of doing in Kiva, that, that we will now be able to have additional functionality that wasn't even possible before. So, they're excellent questions, and I don't think I would want to put my firstborn out as the bet to 100% guaranteed success of all that we are attempting to do.
But we would want your first one.
I'll take the second.
You can't have either one of them, I love them both. But, but I know that the, what the team has done is taken all of these experiences that we have had, and the very best they can, have folded those into the RFP, folded them into the, into the contract, and required all who were proposing, with Edsoft being the most successful, to address those in the best way that we think professional can be accomplished right now.
I really don't want to prove this without any, without any thresholds that we can cross in terms of achievements as to what we're expecting, before we invest that full amount into a system that I'm not sure we're going to be able to implement.
Well, that's what I think would be best, maybe, for Imelda and the staff to represent their professional level of confidence from a technical aspect of actually being able to accomplish these than.
Are there certain steps that you're gonna, you're gonna take and?
Yes.
How are you going to know you're successful in implementing this? Are?
And the points that you're bringing are actually a very similar discussion to the one that is taking place right now, took place at the first meeting of the selection team, because different people have had different experiences with various systems they have been near. And some of them have been failures. You know that IT projects have a high failure rate, so we were all concerned about that from the get-go, and we were looking for ways to ensure that. How are we going to know that it is the right system? And that's why the process took so long, if you will, because we had to come.
Eight months to select the software?
Yeah, we had to do an extensive, first, we work on developing the how, on the, on the requirements and the evaluation criteria, what was going to play to decide this is the right solution for the, for the city.
What were the requirements? What were you, what are you trying, because that's, that's what you measure your success with. What did you start with in terms of your goals as to what you're trying to achieve, and how are you going to achieve those goals, basically?
One, one larger, the largest category of, is, is, is four or five categories. The largest of them, 35% of the, of the weight was given to the functionality, to the function provided by the software, meaning, is the software, can the software give you these types of reports? Can the software give you the ability to schedule inspections in this particular way? Can the software give you a whole list of, I don't remember how many requirements, but it was a comprehensive list of everything that has to do with permit-related activities and the land entitlement process as well. So, that was one section, one section of the, of the evaluation criteria, if you will. Then, another whole section was cost, because we are also worried about, about that, about multimillion-dollar investments that, that we want them to result in, in tangible benefits, not just customer service improvements per se, but also reductions or streamlining of processing time.
How can we, how can we measure that? Tangible benefits? What are the benefits that we don't have now that we're gonna, we're going to be able to see tangibly?
Mr. McFaul?
That was, it's a good point, maybe there's another way to address, address this. That is actually in the initial review process, and in setting up what would be the, the scope of work. One thing we are looking for is simply to replicate or to replace functions we're doing right now. We have a permit system, that's, that's really the, one of the core purposes of the Kiva, is to issue permits. It's a functioning but antiquated system that simply can't take us to the next step, such as being able to do online permits and other things that council and we want to be able to, to do. So, the first and most basic test of the functionalities, can it replace what we're, what we're doing, and then, which we have a high level of confidence that it can, and then, beyond that base of our last 10 years of experience with Kiva, and just knowing where the industry is going, can this software address the additional types of functionality that we want? Basically, all the web-based types, types of applications. The contract is set up on a performance basis, and I would say this is probably one of the most aggressive performance-related contracts, that there, there is a timeline, and there is also progressive payments, somewhat different than what we have done, some applications in the, in the past, well, we might provide.
What is the timeline?
Approximately two years. I don't know the specific, we actually, we actually have, from the, in the proposal, a very specific timeline, and then, we pay on performance. If the, if, literally, if the contractor doesn't perform it, it doesn't work successfully at each stage, they don't get paid beyond that, plus, we hold a retention back. These are things we have not done in past software applications.
Is this system working anywhere else?
Yes, in two local, two cities in the LA area, Beverly Hills and Burbank.
And with good reliability?
With good, with success.
How long has it been working?
Mr. Yusefian, Mr. Manukian's still going.
You said implementation is two years, and you have, in your report, you say the lifespan of the, of the software is 10 years. So, two years out of 10 is implementation?
Yes.
So, we're getting a functionality of approximately eight years?
One of the tragedies of software applications is they do have life cycles that are, that are much more.
I understand, but some of, you know, some of the retail softwares that we deal with are updated annually, and they don't have a lifespan of a short amount. We are paying certain maintenance fees, aren't, isn't the software updated? Why does it have to be a lifespan of 10 years?
The software is updated, that is a part of the functionality of the $100,000 a year maintenance fee, and just because we have an anticipated lifespan of 10 years doesn't mean that it, that it won't go much longer than that. But for our own planning purposes, we have to look at it from the standpoint of what industry standards are, and in fact, Kiva somewhat bears that out, it's about a 10-year-old application, and, and while we would like to think it would go beyond that, simply other community usage expectations, hardware, platform issues, plus, a company simply totally change, as Kiva did, totally changing their, their direction, just tragically, and I say it because it's a heavy financial investment, typically compels applications to be updated. PeopleSoft will be faced with that, the reality is, as we continue to do the, do the updates, we're seeing no reason to need to replace PeopleSoft right, right now, so, even though it would have a similar type of time frame.
But you're going to have this sooner or later, as far as PeopleSoft.
At some point in time, yes.
I, I, I'm in favor of the web-based applications in terms of the community being able to access the services of the city through the website. However, I would like to see staff come up with some thresholds, thresholds or benchmarks as to what you're going to achieve by this software, and when you're going to achieve it, and let us know whether we're there or we're not there. That's, that's very important. And one, one more issue, are we generating, will we be generating savings by doing away with the Kiva system? Are we paying annual maintenance fees, upgrade fees, or whatever? Do we know what that amount is?
Yes.
Yes.
One's going to say that.
Steve Scott? I'm going to ask Steve Scott, IAS Administrator, to give you information on that.
Mayor Weaver, council members, city staff, we pay approximately $40,000 a year for Kiva maintenance, so we'll be using that towards the Edsoft software. I'm also in charge of the PeopleSoft software, so if you have any questions for that, or about that, we'd be happy to answer them.
Just so my colleagues know, it's going to be Mr. Cintero next, then Mr. Najarian, then Mr. Yusefian, as soon as Mr. Manukian's done.
I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Cintero.
In the initial application with planning, is the data going to be available to Glendale citizens, to the public? After that first implementation into the planning department, will residents be able to access the information and find out what's, what's going on down the block?
Project is phase-based, and the staff report addresses which phase will bring out what functionality. If we need more definition of that, we have Tony, the project leader, to.
Yeah, that's one of the things I'm interested in, whether in that first phase, when you implement it with the planning department, whether the public at large, including people here tonight, would be able to go into the city's website and get an idea of what's going on.
Somebody else, I brought this up a few years ago, Mr. Cintero, about a, one common number so everybody can access, but go ahead.
There's, as I mentioned, there's four phases to the project. Oh, my, my name is Anthony Delasota, Information Services Department, and the project, there are risks in the project, as you pointed out, but the components of this project deal with services, software, hardware, data, and information, and where we tried to help mitigate some of these risks was a very detailed work breakdown structure. As I mentioned, it's a phased approach. The deliverables are all marked within each of the modules. The first module would be the planning implementation, in addition to the land fabric or the address business data. Both of these are the foundation of the, of all of the systems, which we share. Following on to that would be the Neighborhood Services or Code Enforcement Module.
No, listen, I, I know all of that. I've read the report.
We're the public.
But what I'm, what I'm asking, if you don't know, maybe someone else can, or in planning, whether some, when we implement the first phase in planning, does that also, and you said data is readily available, et cetera, does it also mean that it's going to be readily available to the public, so that the public, after that first phase is implemented, will be able to log on to the city website and find out if at 509 Kenneth Road, there is a project, and what's that project going to be?
Information will be accessible to, to the public through common reports, as you may see now, some of that will be digitally available online, and others will be accessed directly through the land, land system, where they enter an address or parcel or property record. In addition to that, we are also expanding the system to share our data, not only within the city and the public, but also Los Angeles County, because we also share data as far as property records with them. One of the goals is to keep everybody well-informed and up-to-date on what's going on and how change occurs. All of the, the departments here maintain data and change in their own various ways, and we're trying to get a better handle on how we do that, through inspections, mobile applications, and through the web.
And so, that first implementation through planning will have access to some of that information?
Yeah, within the Public Information Act, yes.
Mr. McFaul, did you?
Well, I just wanted to comment that based upon council's interest in that and this feedback, we will, we will ensure that, following this first phase, which is a cornerstone to the entire project, that that information is simply available to the, to the public. It is why we wanted to go with a web-based application, so that through the various different means, whether it's accessing from home under computers or walking into one of our various application desks, they could access a computer themselves and get the information without having to go through staff. So, we'll, we'll make a real point of working with a consultant to ensure that that happens as quickly as possible.
Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. I'd like to ask questions of someone from the committee. I'd like to ask Neville to come forward. These won't be hard questions, hopefully.
That's what he says.
Sure.
Yeah, they've been pretty easy so far.
So, state your name, please.
I'm Neville Pereira from Building and Safety Division.
Building and Safety, and what do you do? What's your position in Building and Safety?
I'm a planchik engineer currently.
And you have an engineering background?
That's correct.
They keep you pretty busy down at Building and Safety?
Every day.
It's one of the busiest, it's one of the busiest departments that we have.
It is the busiest, as far as I'm concerned.
And you've heard us on council discuss some of the issues, trying to streamline the whole permit process and all that. Is this software going to help you?
Councilman.
Do your job?
Najarian, yeah, members of the council, absolutely. What we've, there have been a lot of opinions about Kiva and its, its lack of fulfilling its potential. Those opinions have mainly been made by people that don't know the system. I'm probably the only one in the city that knows enough about Kiva to say that it can do anything it says it can, and, and much more that we're currently not using. The beauty of this system that we're proposing is it's much simpler in its approach to what we do, in its interface towards our, our city staff, as well as the interface it provides to the public. I'm very comfortable with the process that we put into place in, in making our decision, that we have made the right decision, and, and believe me, it wasn't smooth all, all the way throughout this. There were dissenting departments that wanted additional functionality and guarantees, Mr. Manukian, that this company was going to perform, and there was, there were points during our discussions where, you know, maybe Edsoft wasn't the, the best vendor, however, the company was able to come back and, and put forth promises that they were going to address those, those points, particularly in the case of Neighborhood Services, for example, that has struggled with the Kiva application for the 10 or 13 years that it's been in place. This department, Neighborhood Services section, has, has mandated that their requirements be put into this thing, and they've put in language to make sure that the vendor performs. So, when, I, I can surely understand, this is the fifth implement. So, when, I, I can surely understand, this is the fifth implementation in my career that I've done for various other cities. And because of that experience, I'm, I'm really comfortable with the fact that the, the committee, as you see today, has done their due diligence and it will benefit the city, you know, 24 months from, from today.
And you know, we value, I personally value your opinion. I think I speak for the council. Do you have any reservations or hesitations about making this recommendation to us about, about the EdSoft system?
You know, there, there are always reservations because, you know, a contract is always a promise to fulfill work and, you know, there are no guarantees in life. Me dealing with building contractors every day and, and similarly, owners who have experienced people not fulfilling contracts, there's always that, that potential. However, like I say, the, the contract has been very robustly compiled. There's been a lot of language put in to make sure, and, and payment regimens have been put in place to make sure that deliverables are in place before we make payments. This company, there's somewhat of intangibility that you can't really put into a contract. And I've had just enough discussions with, with EdSoft to discover this intangible. It's, it's a level of comfort with a company that wants to please because they're relatively new in the industry and they wanna make their mark. Now, for, for us in the city of-
I'm making you comfortable.
No, no, I understand that. I understand. I, I totally understand if you, somebody saying that, you know, it's a new company is, it's somewhat uncertain. However, Kiva, when we implemented Kiva, was a relatively new company. And at some point, you have to make that leap of faith with an organization or a company and realize that they are willing to, to, to go through the long haul with you. That's the level of comfort after five, after four implementations that I get with this company. And, you know, there are no guarantees, but I feel comfortable making that recommendation to you.
Have you worked with Beverly Hills and Burbank since they have the system?
We actually, we had, we had a demonstration by Beverly Hills initially, and the, the committee visited the city of Burbank to see its implementation. Granted, city of Burbank is, is relatively new in its implementation, however, they seem very happy with it.
Mr. Yosapien.
That's all for me for-
Don't go anywhere, Neville. I have questions. I, I, I won't question you like an attorney and ask you to say yes or no and don't answer anything else. If, if you, you apparently have worked with Kiva for many years.
That's correct.
Based on your testimony, you said that you knew more about the system than most people do because you work on it every day. So, let me ask you this question. If we upgraded, I'm assuming that Kiva still exists?
That's correct.
Okay. If, I mean, Kiva's not gonna be just sitting around and doing nothing. They're a software company, so they know that there are other people out there improving their software, so they have to improve their software, they have to create patches and so on and so forth. Based on your knowledge of working with Kiva, are there software patches that can be implemented to Kiva to give us what this particular application will do? Forget the company, it's the application of the software.
I am, I am the staunchest proponent of Kiva and, and allowing Kiva to live on in the city of Glendale. However, being a, being astute enough to realize how technology is going, Kiva unfortunately is not able to make that leap, the leap that we need to. You actually do need to change technology in order to, to get more longevity out of what we do. And, and Kiva, regrettably, is a legacy system. The company will admit it. The company is actually trying to move people off onto different systems. They own the, they own, they own the, the software, and they're actively trying to move people off of that software onto other products, just because they know there's a lot of, a lot of work that needs to be done to, to keep it going. We're shoveling coal into the machine right now. If we got a lot more coal to shovel in, by all means, keep it going. But, you know, at some point, you need to move on to the faster ship in order to move forward, and I think this, this is the right time.
Mr. McCall, do you want to add to that one particular question?
Just to that one, in fact, let's expand the question too, beyond Kiva, but to the also, the other very few companies that even provide the product. What I have, one, one, one thing that seems somewhat incredible is that when you go out in the market, it's not like there's 20 different companies that provide this and have been doing it for years. There's an extremely small group of companies that even provide this application. And what we have found is that EdSoft is actually the only one in acquiring a newer system, as they have developed, that is in fact, from the ground up, a web-based system. It's always been a web-based system, that's what it is. The other companies, even some of the other frontrunners, are what 10 years ago was the contemporary client server, which is now, that is the antiquated legacy type systems. And to provide them to Glendale web-based, they actually have to convert their programs. So, we would be, we would be their test grounds for conversions of existing applications into where we want to be able to get to, which is a web-based application. It's one of the things that makes this app, application extremely attractive.
Mr. Yosapien, next question?
The next question is, and I, I'd like to ask the, where was the gentleman? Yeah, IAS. My question is, it was just brought up that this, this company is recently a new company and, you know, they, they are very motivated to do this project and help us out. Are there, did, did we make a decision with this company because, because they're new, they priced, they brought their price down? Or is it because this is the company regardless what the price was? And that, that's very important to me. Did we pick this guy because he came back and says, you know what, I'll give, it was 1.5, I'll do it for whatever it is? And we said, okay, because we had somebody else who said, I'll do it for 1.5 and there's not a dime I would do below?
Let's get an answer.
Which one?
To answer your question, it was not one single item for the review. The RFP was submitted based on a functional requirements, about 283 specifications, which staff developed of what was currently in Kiva or missing from Kiva. There was also vendor experience, which is past performances at other cities or other production systems. A combination of cost, which was looking at not only just the cost of the software, but the cost of the consulting services, the cost of data conversion, cost of training, and other components of the project necessary to complete the project. And the last was technology that you described, which is, you talk about the architecture, what databases are running in, what operating system is it compatible with the city's current systems that we have in place, which it is. The combination of all of those was weighted accordingly based on a criteria that we looked at on each of the six vendors. And out of those six vendors, you have in your staff report an exhibit that totals the, the total score of each of the six. That was the basis for the evaluation. In addition to that, we also looked at confirmation, not only what was in the RFP, but as Mr. Pereira mentioned, we also went over to the, we had it conducted an oral interview. The oral interview was a very comprehensive test case that was built by staff to actually go through and model the data. So, show me actually this product working with the, the types of components that we expected to perform. So, we did that for one day and actually grilled the staff on their expertise, their management skills, and their approach. That was one component we called the oral interview and the software demonstration. In addition to that, we actually went for confirmation to the actual vent, uh, customer sites. Two sites were selected based on the recommendation from the vendors. One was the city of Burbank, which was close to us. The second one, which is the other finalist, was a company called CSDC. We went to the city of San Jose and currently met with their staff for a full day. There was actually 15 members of our steering committee. Each of the committee was broken down into sections to look at planning and each of the components of the software, to gather as much information as we could on the product. And as a conclusion, we evaluated all of these components together and scored them accordingly based on, on staff's recommendations. That was the basis for how we scored this project and selected EdSoft.
Did, did EdSoft give you the list of cities? Or did they just give you two cities?
The requirement of our RFP was they must provide a minimum of two. Two recommendations, yes.
They did not give us any more?
Uh, that was not a requirement. The minimum requirement was two. We, we could have specified three or more.
Well, why didn't we specify more than two? I mean, they may have, they may have installed 10 of these things and they picked the two that had the least amount of problems and gave it to us. I would have required that they give us a list of all the cities that they installed this, and then we would pick and choose who we call to see what you get. I mean, as a contractor, let me tell you, if you wanna know, check my information, I'm gonna give you a list of two customers that I did an exceptional job on, and you're not gonna know about all the crappy jobs I did for the other ones. I'm not gonna give you a reference to somebody who I botched their job, so I'm gonna give you the best. But if I give you a list of all of my customers and then you pick and choose, I have no clue. You may pick that one.
The bottom line is they did two. So, what's the next question?
Actually, there was more requirements in addition. We selected two. That was the requirement. There was actually past performance based on the company's history and other products that they had delivered based on each of the modules. So, it was a comprehensive list, but we had selected two for our choosing that we would pick based on our requirements. And then what we would do is we contacted the, the customer, and the vendor was not allowed or permitted to participate in that discussion. Our staff met with their staff and it was an open discussion in which we had criteria that we asked of the, the customer specifically to validate and verify what we saw in the demo and what the software said it was capable of performing. So, we confirmed a lot of the things that you described based on the site. I'm not sure I would classify the other sites as being, I forgot your, your classification as being-
The ones that did the best job.
The best job. There's many components to the software product, as you well know. Each of the components have strengths and weaknesses. For our staff, each of the staff, as I say, scored and weighted their sections of, of the product and the functionality to match against what we currently are using and what we currently are missing. And so, staff has actually felt comfortable, and you can pull the resources and actually look at the results if you'd like, that we're confident that the product will fulfill the business requirements, not only the software requirements, but the multi-department requirements. In addition to this, I'd just like to make a point that we're starting out in a limited scope here. We just targeted the, the high-profile departments that are having some difficulty processing with Kiva. It doesn't limit this product to just those departments. We would like to extend it with the customer information billing, which also has customer records based on land location and other business data. We also, as I mentioned earlier, would like to extend it to the Los Angeles County. So, as data changes or as validation and verification of changes, we have them actually connect into our system by email notification, so they can see our data, see it on a GS map, and actually go in and queue into the record that we're actually questionable. And they can add comments and, and suggestions on how to verify and validate based on their records. So, we're trying to get collaboration of sharing data and information, not only within the city, but through other agencies that maintain change through this product.
Thank you. Do you have more questions?
Last question. The, the two cities you checked, Burbank being one of them, Beverly Hills the other ones, did their previous system was Kiva?
The city of Beverly Hills, the product was Sierra Permits, I believe, which is a, one of the components of Exella is the corporation that makes Kiva. And the same in Burbank was also a Sierra Permits software.
So, none of them were Kiva?
Uh, they were from the same company. Kiva, Exella Incorporated, has rights to three permitting software. One product is Kiva. We call it a data management system. The second product is TideMark, which is very similar to Kiva. And the third was a Sierra Permits, which is an older predominantly building and safety module. It's, that's what its strengths were.
So, we had a newer version that we were using, they were using the older version. So, we really don't know if they had Kiva, how they would compare.
Well, we, we would compare because our, as far as the city of Burbank, we're, we're structured very similar, and the departments have very similar requirements, other than municipal code and other components. But from a data management, update, permitting, issuance, inspections, we're identical almost in that respect.
To, to clarify and make sure I get this right, when we acquired Kiva, we actually bought from the company that was Kiva. Kiva was acquired by Exella.
Yes.
Kiva as a company doesn't exist any, any longer. And in fact, they're, they're changing their product line. There's a lot that's going on now with Exella. In fact, I don't believe that they even responded to the, to the RFP. Yeah, so, we, we expected them, since they already have an investment here, to respond. They didn't even respond to the RFP.
Cintero.
You could've said that, saved me a lot of headaches.
I'm for-
From beginning.
I'm for moving forward. I actually think this was a very comprehensive approach with not only our IT professionals, but with the, the different, uh, sections in the city that were, uh, working on this, the task force, I guess it was called. So, I think the selection committee did a good job. You worked on it for eight months. In addition to that, you visited all the different sites, so I don't see any, I don't see any issues. I think it was a legitimate RFP that you went out of your way. Most of the RFPs that we do aren't researched the way, the way this one has been researched. So, I think we just need to move forward and I'm sure we're gonna have a much better system than we have currently, including the public having access to, to the planning department and later on permitting and so forth. So, I'm in support.
Mr. Menuchyan.
You have allocated 100, approximately $115,000 for customization. What kind of customization is it?
Wants to try that one on.
We, we like to use the term enhancements. And when we wrote the RFP, we currently found out very quickly that any software out there really didn't have all of the requirements that we needed in our business. So, what we did is, based on the 283 functional specifications, staff included things that they must have and mandatory requirements for them to conduct their business. And some of these requirements have to do with mobile, inspections, web access, reporting, and verification and validation. So, there was a lot of additional functionality added to the specifications of this review. The basis for that is to have the consultant quote what would it take to actually modify or configure their product. We're talking about configuring here. A lot of these products are adjustable based on the needs of the, of the customer. So, what we've asked, the city of Burbank may do their land use planning slightly different than us, which are using the same product. However, if you look at the product, it's actually the exact same product, but it actually is the workflows a little bit differently. So, what EdSoft has the ability to do is sort of tailor or configure and customize the, the product for the business specifically. And the reason for that was that we are somewhat of an advanced user. You mentioned that Neighborhood Services has been currently using the, the application of Kiva for more than 11 years. The Building and Safety Department began its implementation, I believe, in 1994. Planning implementation was currently added recently over the past year. In addition to that, we hope to extend the, the application to the licensing, which would be the city clerk's office to help with other types of licensing and code enforcement, in addition to city manager's office. So, the product has many flexibilities that we wanted to have specifically for our business. So, that's what the term is, enhancements. Enhancements can also, just may make a clarification so you understand, is like a report. I have a report and we have a traditional report of name, address, and phone number. Well, we may need something slightly different, name, address, phone number, with a graph and some kind of fee assessment. So, that's what staff has asked for out of this product. So, the enhancements help make sure that the product, we lessen the risk, is usable by the department based on their demands. And that was the purpose of the-
Why is, why are you implementing, or why is the committee implementing Planning Department first?
That was an arbitrary choice based on a recommendation from the consultant, as far as the greatest benefit in the shortest amount of time for the cost. And you mentioned earlier about minimizing risk. It was a way that the, that staff could quickly and efficiently determine, is the product gonna fulfill their needs? So, within a very short period of time, in the order of six months to eight months, we would not only have a workable product in production that was using, usable by staff and that staff was being trained in to evaluate. And that was the basis for our first step. Immediately thereafter, in transition, would, as you well know, would be the Phase Two with Neighborhood Services. And then the other phases naturally on top of that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Menuchyan.
I, I will support it with the performance benchmarks. I think those are, those are very important. And we, I would like to see a report periodically as to where it is in terms of the benchmarks.
We will absolutely do that.
Okay, thank you. From my stat, Mr. Yosapien.
You have a motion. You don't have a-
You don't have a second yet.
No, I want to make a comment myself.
I was going to make a second.
Well, just wait a minute.
Okay, I'll wait.
From my standpoint, I started working with the Bendex computer that occupied an entire air-conditioned room back in the mid-'60s. I went through the card indexing and a number of systems over my career. When I arrived here in '97, email didn't even exist. And every system that I've seen implemented over time, of course, has its risk involved. But technology is evolving fast and rapid, and we have to move ahead with the times and take that risk if it's there. Otherwise, we're going to be stand still, and we're going to fall behind. So I think it's a very good investment. I really thank the staff that I know spent a tremendous amount of time coming up with this system. And it may not be perfect, but it's going to be a lot better than what we've had. So I want to thank all of you, including you, engineer. I had to throw that in.
I'll move 8A1.
Mr. Mayor, I will second that with the same proviso that Mr. Menucha said. I think as we implement this, each one, do a benchmark test, come back to us. Let us know how it's working, if it's okay before you go then, so we feel comfortable about it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Mr. Jarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Thank you very much, staff.
Have to move 8A2?
No, then we're done.
Thank you so very much. You can all go home now. Okay.
Can we do 9A?
8B.
Get it over with. Quick one.
Okay. There's no cards or nothing on 9A. Okay. We're going to take it because it's going to take less than one minute. Read 9A into the record.
Mr. Mayor and Council, 9 is a hearing, 9A, and it's Director of Public Works regarding vacation of Beacon's Way and a portion of airway in Glendale vacation case number 156V. 9A1 is resolution ordering the vacation, and 9A2 is resolution adopting plan number 12-220.
Can we do 9A1 and 2 together?
First, you need to open the public hearing, but yes, sir.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Nobody's coming forth. I have no cards. Public hearing is closed. It's our motion.
Mayor, I'll move on.
9A1, 2.
Second.
Second. Okay. Roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Mr. Jarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Now let's go back to 8B.
8B is Director of Planning, continued from November 21, 2006, regarding appeal of Design Review Board case number 1-PDR2005-143, located at 240 Sleepy Hollow Terrace. 8B1 is motion sustaining the alternative assessment panel's decision to deny the Design Review Board application. And 8B2 is motion overturning, reversing the alternative assessment panel's decision to deny the Design Review Board application.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Garcia, I want to clarify. We did have a public hearing on this matter.
I'm sorry?
We did have a public hearing on this matter, and the public hearing was closed.
That's correct.
So any public testimony today should be related to four items that are included in the summary, I presume?
That's correct. I believe the hearing was closed at the November meeting, and there were four items of information that the council requested be brought back. Staff has compiled that information for you, and it would be appropriate to have public comment on that since it's an agenda item, but that discussion can be limited to those four items. That's correct.
One is the 50% rule, and they've modified the house. So that's a non-item. It is going to be new house construction now, correct?
It's... In terms of complying with the zoning code, it is deemed a new construction.
The verification of a lot size has been arrived at.
I believe. You probably want to get the information on that.
Too. I'm just leading up. I'm trying to let the public... I've got seven, eight cards. And no need to get up and say you don't like the project and you don't want it there because that has been thoroughly discussed in the hearing and closed. So I'm just trying to lay out the items that you can find fault with. Third is the show the floor area ratio requirement. Show that it will be met and supposedly done. And the last, the map that has been provided, it shows the relationship of the proposed new house to the two houses above and below it. Those are things that... I'm not going to say you can't talk about, but those are the items that you should be addressing now because the public hearing has been concluded. And with that, your name, and then go on.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Milka Toledo. I am the case planner for this project. As you alluded to earlier, on November 21st, the city council did hear this project, conducted a public hearing, and after closing, it made a motion to continue the case for those items that you just mentioned. Again, they are delineated in your staff report, and I can also, for the sake of having the public also follow through. I have a very brief presentation. It's a PowerPoint, and it's only two slides. If you'd like, I'll go ahead and put it up.
You want to see the two slides?
If not, it's in your presentation, or I could just verbally go over the items.
Verbally go over it.
Okay.
Just two slides?
Two slides.
Correct.
Wait, what do you want?
Just two.
Let our viewing audience see what we're talking about.
Turn it on. Please.
Looks like three slides.
And setback was part of that.
Three, including the title.
Oh, wow. That's 50% more.
See, that's what happened. 50% more? What happened? How many slides did we have this afternoon? About 50 or 60?
Eighty.
Eighty? Dim the lights, please.
Okay, the... Oops. Sorry. The items were, number one, to verify the 50% calculation. And I'll just read it verbatim. Verify that less than 50% of the area of the walls and roof will be removed. Show the calculations. If more than 50%, then you will need to make minor changes to the design to accommodate the 10-foot interior setback, and that would be along the westerly side of the property.
And that's what caused it to go to a new house rather than a modification.
Based on the revised plans submitted, and they were included in your pack, and I have placed them on the panel boards behind the screen, the appellant has modified the right side of the house by proposing to demolish five feet of the existing house in order to accommodate a 10-foot interior setback. More than 50% of the house is being removed, thus the applicant is proposing to comply with all current code zoning regulations. So that addresses that 50% rule. It's a given. They will remove more than 50%, thus they will comply with current code. Two was to verify the lot area and provide a plan with a wet signature of a licensed surveyor or registered civil engineer on the calculation. The appellant has modified the total lot area. The revised plans indicate that the total lot is 11,000 square feet. Previously was 11,420. The total area has been verified by a licensed surveyor or registered civil engineer. Excuse me. Let me correct that. At the time the appellant provided the information to us, the lot area had not been verified by a licensed civil engineer or surveyor. However, they have submitted a revised plan, as a matter of fact, this morning. The property owner did submit a revised plan. I have placed it on the panel behind you. If you'd like to actually look at it and look at the seal on it. It does have a handwritten note. The property owner verified the total lot area and has noted, if I recall, 10,995.89 square feet approximately. Thus, if you round it up, it's 11,000 square feet.
Okay.
Item number three was to show how the floor area ratio requirement will be met. The appellant has modified the total floor area calculations in compliance with zoning code regulations. Total proposed floor area for the house will be 4,016 square feet. Previously was 4,157 square feet. The maximum allowable floor area for this zone is 4,100 square feet, based on a 4,000 square... Excuse me, 11,000 square foot lot. Lastly, to provide an exhibit showing the relationship between the subject property and the adjacent houses on either side when viewed from Sleepy Hollow Terrace. The appellant has submitted a new exhibit showing the relationship between the subject property and the adjacent homes. Again, that particular plan is in... Was included in your packet, and is also pinned up on the panels behind the screen. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues, or should we go to the public?
One question. Mr. Yusefian.
Since this has been modified, is... I'm assuming that the rest of the items are within the code requirements, like landscaping, setbacks, heights?
That is correct.
Could you... I mean, it's been a while.
Okay.
What is the allowed height currently under the code?
In the R1R restricted residential zone, you're allowed to have a maximum height of 32 feet.
And what is this one?
If your minimum roof pitch is 3 and 12, you could go an additional five feet for a total of... Excuse me, an additional three feet for a total of 35 feet.
And what is this house?
Let me look at my plans.
Because what I have in here, I can't read it very well. It's been zirracked so many times.
According to the elevation drawing that is in your packet, they're showing a maximum height from the lowest point to the highest point of the ridge of 26 feet 6 inches. And that can be identified on the north elevation, and that's the elevation I'm looking at.
Yeah. It's supposedly here.
That is correct.
I can't read it. That's why I'm asking you this.
26 feet 6 inches.
Okay. And the setbacks on both sides are how much?
On the westerly side, they are now proposing 10 feet because they're cutting back five feet of the house. And on the other side, it is 11 feet approximately.
When you say westerly side...
10... I'm sorry, 10 feet 5 inches.
The property lines at the top of the...
Correct. That would be the 10... That's the easterly side.
Okay, that's 10.5.
That's approximately 10.5, and the other side will be 10.
The property lines are at the top of the slopes of the lots, right?
Correct.
And what's the code requirement?
For a new house, 10 feet.
10 feet. Because of R1R?
That is correct.
Okay. And front setback?
15 feet is the minimum requirement.
And what is this one?
They are proposing approximately 22 feet 9 inches.
Okay. And is the landscaping 42%? I can't read that in here. Is that accurate? 40% required. They have 42%?
That's what they're showing. We did not verify it.
Okay.
We'll do that. Normally, we do that during plan check.
Is there any hardscape or water feature?
No. They are only introducing, as far as hardscape at the front, that would be the driveway, and they have a walkway leading to the front entry.
Okay.
Okay.
And then they have a walk... Another... A new walkway shown on the easterly side of the property.
And what did you say was the total square footage, 14?
4,016 square feet. And also, just for sake of knowing, a pool is also included in the landscape calculation.
Right. You always add a pool with that.
Okay.
Okay.
And certain portions of the deck of the pool.
And the FAR is .4? Is that the...
The way it's calculated is .40 for the first 10,000 square feet and .10 for each square footage of lot thereafter.
You hit the 41.
So they hit the 41. Because 11,000, exactly. It's easy to count.
Okay, you have a number of cards. You heard of... All the items that you can discuss, if you disagree with any of those or support those.
Thank you.
Let's try two minutes and see where it goes. I have... Anybody else with a card they're going to turn in? Turn it in now, forever. Hold your piece. Okay? I'll accept no more cards. They're in. Al Hoffman?
Mayor Weaver, city council, and staff. I came here this evening on behalf of the Glen Oaks Canyon residents there.
Thank you.
And I...
I live there.
Believe that they are all here in opposition to this development. I can't speak to the four terms that you all mentioned other than that we support them in that we should have considerate development. That's what we need. Is this house appropriate in the neighborhood? I don't have pictures of the neighboring houses, but it's probably isn't. And I think this is where we fall short in our city is we don't have considerate development. If it was considerate, the owners and the developers would consider their neighbors' wishes and build something that is compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. And something that isn't compatible just shouldn't be allowed. So I ask you to uphold the Design Review Board's decision to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Wallace, followed by Heather Williams.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. This is a nice time we gather to discuss this project. As a longtime resident of Sleepy Hollow and Glen Oaks Canyon, it's my opinion that this proposed addition will look like a top-heavy box. It's out of character for the neighborhood and is not compatible with the rest of the houses on this cul-de-sac. A project like this diminishes the integrity of the neighborhood and will stick out like a sore thumb. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Williams, followed by Jeanette Williams.
Hello. I'm Heather Williams. I just wanted to say a few things. I think that this project is inconsistent and incompatible with the city of Glendale's hillside ordinance and our zone regulations. Any reasonable person can see this project will stick out from the surrounding neighborhood. I think that the character of our neighborhood is terraced with shifting planes and horizontal lines, and there's nothing horizontal about this project. I urge you gentlemen to reject this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Williams, followed by John McMillan.
I am Jeanette Williams, and I am the neighbor to the east of this project. And I can tell you that that picture up there that is proposed to show you how the houses relate to each other is not drawn to scale. As our property sits now without the new addition on, their roof line comes exactly to the top of that hill there, and a second story will stand up much higher. I doubt that that picture was drawn by a licensed architect or someone with the knowledge to know how to draw to scale. I urge you to vote against this project. The neighborhood guidelines speak specifically about this, and so do our zones. In reference to the houses being adjacent like this in item number four, the site plan shall show preservation of prominent natural features, native vegetation, and open space in a manner compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, minimizing alteration of terrain necessary for development. This is going to alter the terrain completely and significantly. This house is not horizontal. This house is not horizontal, it's vertical. It does not, it's not compatible in any way with any of the other homes on the street. Inful homes should set back at least twenty-five feet and recognize the surrounding development characteristics. Wrench-style homes are low-lined homes with a larger width than height. This is more vertical than horizontal. I urge you to vote against this, please.
You're right about one thing.
A reasonable man can see.
You're right about one thing, there's no scale, no nothing on here.
No.
That an engineer would put on.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question of?
Yes, Ms. Manukian?
Yes, sir.
My directions are a little bit confused, but, and I don't want to use the word view, but what is your most, let's say, attractive line of sight from your home? Is it out, and if there's a downtown area of Glendale or the canyon, I understand there's a, the Glen Oaks Canyon? Which way is your most attractive line of sight? Let me put it that way.
It is over the Basmagian's roof line, not in this picture. Their rebuild is going to completely obstruct a view that we have.
He wants to know now. What is your best view now? Over the rooftop of their house?
Mm-hmm.
So looking at that schematic with the three homes, would it be looking from the left to the right?
Yes.
Do you see what I'm?
Correct, yes, yes, mm-hmm. So our, we would look out that way, and we see the entire city of Glendale, the valley beyond that, and the hills beyond that. And it's, we have a complete view of all of Glendale and the valley.
Well, there's that word again, view.
Yeah, sorry, it's a dirty word.
You mentioned that, that you thought that that house was not the scale. Obviously, you think it's smaller than it would actually be.
Yes, that is correct.
It would be larger.
Mm-hmm. Our house is on the left of that picture, and we have eight-foot ceilings in our home. And those ceilings there that they're proposing, some of them are sixteen-foot ceilings, and most of them are ten-foot ceilings, and there's double that.
And as that picture is drawn, and I can't attest to its accuracy, but it would appear as though it's about the same level as your roof, maybe slightly lower.
That's what that looks like.
That's what that picture shows. And we'll find out how accurate that is.
I can tell you, standing?
There is no scale on there. You can draw anything on you want, but there is no scale on drawing.
We'll get into that at the appropriate.
But I can tell you that standing on our property there, looking out?
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, John McMillan, followed by June McMillan. Okay, June, you're on first.
Hello. Well, it's an interesting situation. We have discussed all the things that's wrong with it over the years, and so I decided to sit here tonight writing some things that were on my mind.
Remember the?
I was not able to come to the last meeting.
When we had the public hearing.
What?
When we had the public hearing, right? You couldn't make it.
No, I, my health wouldn't allow me to come. As it was, I wouldn't have, because I watched it on television. I became so frustrated.
I'm just trying to get to the meat of the issues here tonight.
Yeah, but I got so frustrated, I turned it off. Then I'd sit there and think, no, I gotta watch, and I'd turn it back on. This got to be, to the point that I just couldn't believe. First of all, I got the feeling that whoever took the pictures, they did not take them with our best interest, because they did not show. There was one house they showed that I didn't even recognize. I've lived there for over forty-three years, and I know all the houses, I know the people that live in them. The other thing was, when it came to our house, which is long, it's on the curve of the street, so we go quite a ways around. We're almost one room wide. The house, our house, showed up as a garage. If they had to have stood awfully close to our house to avoid the oak trees that were on each side of the driveway, there wasn't another bit of that house shown. The thing that upset me the most, you will not see what we did for one of the other meetings we came to. My husband and I went up the street. We took his camera, took pictures of each one of those houses. He went down to one of the places, whatever, Kiko's or what, and had them enlarged to about nine by eleven. And then we came, he brought them back, we cut them so they would fit together, and they are in panorama view, about that long. The city has them. You have not seen them show up. They were presented at one of the meetings. Matter of fact, it was next to the last one, I think, of the review board. And those have never shown up. You'd have known exactly what you're looking at. That's why I say I'm just very upset about how this whole thing has been handled. On our pictures, you'd also see there's a fireplug in front of the garages. The, that's pretty much about what I have to say, but I just, it keeps me really stirred up.
For what it's worth, I've driven it a number of times.
Huh?
For what it's worth, I've driven it a number of times.
Well, the thing is, somebody that knew something about doing that should have done it. I learned in university, that's why we went up and did those. If you don't have a geographer on your staff somewhere, then you're short. You should have somebody that you can talk to, because they could have gone out and taken pictures.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Next speaker, John McMillan. You want to emphasize anything she said?
Well, I'm just concerned about the scale of that drawing, showing the?
There is no scale on the drawing. There's measurements on the drawing, but that one that?
That two-story house is going to be a lot taller than what they're showing there now. And I think maybe?
Our local measure, measuring.
It doesn't matter. Doggone it. I'm an engineer, and you don't do a drawing without putting a scale on. Measurements don't mean a thing.
Mr. Yusefian this again.
Well, you do what he wants, but I know what I'm talking about.
I think the third garage is going to be much closer to the lot line than it is showing there.
Well, I don't know about that. I'm just making a very obvious point.
Yeah. Well, they're pretty close already, and they're going to endanger the house up on the outside if we have any type of shake. That house is liable to come down.
No, they'll be retaining walls, they'll be structurally designed. It's not going to happen.
Articles in the paper this last couple of weeks, talking down this manitization.
You mean view?
They even took, they even put a picture of, if you'll excuse the expression, El Chavar.
Oh, I know.
One of the biggest butches that was in the city.
Let's not go there.
And if we continue, if we continue to let these houses go, we're going to be a third-world city.
That's not good.
They're gonna, they're gonna have these up-and-down vehicles, and it's going to look like something in Tijuana.
Okay, got the point.
Except the cardboard will be missing.
Okay, got the point.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, Kim Sellers, followed by Shoey Yipremian.
Kim Sellers, I'm here on behalf of Redugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association. Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff, first of all, I would like to thank you all for the tremendous hours and time that you've put into this. I myself am not used to staying up till past midnight, and I thank you for everything you've done. Briefly, I'd like to address one issue that repeatedly comes up in these hearings, and that is, over and over again, there is a question about whether or not these structures are within zoning. And I'd like to remind council, and certainly you can consult with your attorney, but the zoning code contains chapter thirty-four-seven, and that is the design review code. And thus, nothing here has passed zoning until it meets the requirements of thirty-four-seven, and that is compatibility, et cetera. Second, I would like to tell you that I spent more than an hour down at the planning department looking at that picture with the comparisons of the three houses. The copy I saw seemed to have a scale of one-quarter to, one-quarter inch to an inch. So I borrowed a ruler, and I went over it every which way that I could. Pardon me?
It's an eight.
Well?
Every eighth of an inch is one feet. When you measured, the house is fifteen on an eight, and the other one is twenty-six on an eight.
It could be that, might not be. The point is, the engineer did not put it on there.
And, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, in addition, I tried comparing, I borrowed a ruler from staff. I compared at an eighth, at a quarter, and a half to those plans and to other plans that were in the department. None of it made sense. I couldn't make that set of plans, that comparison reconcile with anything. The final thing I'd like to mention is, this plan is absolutely maxed out on this lot. Is that what we want in Glendale, in our neighborhoods, is homes that are maxed out? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last speaker, Shoey Yipremian.
Mr. Mayor, members of Glendale City Council, good evening. Shoey Yipremian, Yipremian Consulting. I don't want to repeat what Milka presented in terms of the four items submitted for your review and consideration this evening. Just a minor correction. I think Mr. Yusefian asked about the setback. On the east side, it's a fourteen-foot setback, not a ten-foot setback. On the other, it is the new ten-foot setback. If we look at the distance between structures, it's about thirty feet on the east side, and about twenty-five, twenty-six feet on the east side, and thirty feet on the west side. And I, again, I don't want to repeat my previous presentation, but I would like to let you know that we do want your full support on this, and hopefully you pass this project in design review. Again, this project was in design review for a year and a half. You had professionals reviewing this project on design review board, and they determined that this project is incompatible. And again, what you have in front of you is a project that meets all the zoning code requirements, and we do fully advise that you approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no more cards. It's the pleasure of my colleagues. Mr. Manukian?
Last time we had, and I can't find it.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Barry Ross. I'm legal counsel to Mr. Basmagian. You yourself, I forgive you, I did not turn a card for the reason that, I didn't expect to speak, but you raised the question of the scale and the compatibility of the drawing.
Sir?
That drawing was prepared by Mr. Basmagian.
Number one, I didn't recognize you here. I am going to recognize you, but when you're finished, please turn in a card like everybody else.
I'll be happy to.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. You raised the question of the scale and the drawing here. It is to scale. It was prepared by Mr. Basmagian. Mr. Basmagian is a design professional. If you'd like him to place a scale on that drawing, he can do it now. Mr. Yusefian himself looked at the drawing and has determined that there is a scale to it. There is, in fact, a scale to it. He can testify and he can verify that it is to scale. And that's all that you requested, and I'd like him to stand up here and make that statement.
Sir, I made a comment, there was no scale on there.
There is?
That is correct. It may be accurate, it may not. The point is, there is nothing on there for me as an engineer to measure by. I've done this for thirty-five, thirty-seven years, so you don't need to lecture me on what is right or wrong.
I'm not saying that you're wrong.
You have made your point. That may be accurate. I'm just saying there's no scale there, so there's nobody here can tell me what it is.
May I have Mr. Basmagian indicate that it is to scale?
No, you may not. You have made your point. I made my point. I closed the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
I closed the testimony. Please turn in a card now.
I will.
Now, what do my colleagues want? Mr. Manukian?
I was asking, there were a number of homes with the size of the homes, and if someone can review that for me, I'd appreciate it. I can't find it in my heart.
Yeah, I couldn't find that.
What are you referring to? The other homes surrounding, surrounding there, the average home in the area, there was the largest home.
Do we have a sheet that shows, we had a tabulation?
Right, before.
We had a tabulation of the home sizes surrounding. Is it in our, is it in our handout from the past? Yeah. I thought we had.
Is it in the presentation you did last time? Is it in the, is it in the PowerPoint you did last time, or is it set differently?
The pictures are in the presentation from last time.
Well, not the pictures.
But not, you want square footages?
Square footages of the homes.
Of the houses surrounding. I forget, they were smaller.
Photos?
No, 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 no. Square footage sizes of the houses in the, in Sleepy Hollow Terrace.
The neighborhood survey?
That. Mr. Manukian had a question on it.
No, I just, I just wanted to see, I want to refresh my memory.
We had a copy. I don't know if it was in the?
Is it in the, is it in the old reports?
No, that item was never included in the report. What we did was that we handed it out to the council members the day of the?
During the presentation.
Other questions?
I think someone should run a copy and pass it out to all council members. Yeah?
Just the top sheet.
Just the top sheet.
Top sheet.
It can go into the council chambers.
Okay, does any of my colleagues have anything to say?
Well, I will be, since there's no view ordinance in the city of Glendale yet, the issues, the issues that I'm dealing with are the issues of compatibility with the neighborhood, issues of massing. I'd like to see how large that, and we know it's four thousand sixteen square feet, how that compares to some of the other homes in the neighborhood. From the photos, we do see there are several other two-story homes nearby. Two-seventeen, Sleepy Hollow, two-thirty-one, Sleepy Hollow, two-eleven, Sleepy Hollow.
They're on the uphill slope.
There may be, not on the same side of the street, right? Those are lot numbers, so they're on the other side. I mean, we certainly don't want, you know, when I think about this, I don't want these neighbors to be mortal enemies over the construction of a house. No, well, we hope that, we hope that it's not a permanent mortal enemy situation.
Mortal combat.
And I'm, from the picture that we're looking at, which we know that there is no scale on it, and it's been questioned as to whether it's accurate or not, the home at twenty-six feet, six inches does not seem to be overly high, in and of its own. However, that, from elevation twenty-three feet on, is what's killing the Williams next door to that. You know, that's what I'm grappling with now. I think, per se, just because there's a second story on it, I don't think that that house is wrong for the neighborhood. But size may be another issue. When I get this sheet off the presses in just a few moments, as well as the massing, which might be, is there any, currently, is there any landscaping between those two homes?
Yes.
What are we, does someone, can someone tell us what exists there? Between the uphill, the Williams home and the proposed?
You don't have a picture?
I should have a picture.
Well, just for the record, the pictures on the computer, I can't tell a thing. I mean, it's black and white, and?
We had them in color before.
I continuously say that we should have them in color on the computer.
Mr. Quintero? Shh, shh. Please, please, folks. Audience time is done. That's now.
Regarding the question about the landscaping?
Yes.
I can try to answer the question to the best of my ability, because I did visit the site prior to the previous meeting. I went to the rear of the site. However, I did not go to the easterly side of the house, abutting the Williams. So to the rear of the house, there was grass, and to the side of the house, on the westerly side, I recall there was a, somewhat of a covered patio. As you exited one of the rooms of the house, a sliding glass door, and there was hardscape there, just a concrete pad, and then grass again. So there was landscaping along that perimeter of the house. Again, I did not visit the east side of the house.
And I guess my, that, I mean, that's the real critical side, obviously. If there are twenty-foot, thirty-foot cypress trees or firs that are delineating the border between the homes, the height of the proposed home is less of an issue for me. But if it is, in fact, as depicted in the picture, just a, an open area, clear, without any significant obstruction, that also is a factor. So I'm looking for my pictures currently. I thought I had it, yeah, I thought I had the existing. I know I did.
Mr. Quintero, you like to say something?
I've driven up and down the street, and I did it actually a few days ago. And let me start by saying, in terms of second-story homes, when you look at these homes, they're really what technically you would almost want to call, not almost, what you would call split levels. So they're not one story over another story. The way they're hollowed into the hills, there's just not much bulk or much massing, as opposed to the, to the project that we have before us, which is basically a bottom floor and then a floor directly above it. Most of the other homes that have second floors are split-level in design. And for me, the neighborhood is the street, not down on Glen Oaks, not further up that hill, but this immediate street, the two-hundred, basically what winds up being the two-hundred block of Sleepy Hollow Terrace. That, for me, is the neighborhood. And in that neighborhood, it's very apparent that this house does not fit. It is not compatible with the rest of that street. When you look at the square footage, this? When you look at the square footage, this proposed home at over four thousand square feet, you look at the other numbers and from what I can see, the largest one is thirty-four hundred square feet. So, that's a full thousand square feet less more or less. The floor area ratio, the same way, this floor area ratio is at thirty-nine percent. All the others are at fifteen and twenty-three and seventeen. So, I just don't see how this, this house is compatible with the neighborhood and so it doesn't go with the hillside ordinance or the hillside guidelines. I think the family is entitled to build a bigger home and I think they should think about redesigning this project and trying to do something that fits in with this ranch style neighborhood, including a more split level approach and getting away from this particular design. I just don't, I don't think it fits in at all.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I'll go. Mr. Yusefian?
First of all, I want to thank the applicant for bringing the information we needed. I think this information should have been given to design review board one originally in a first time, so we didn't have to go back and forth on this. I scaled the document and there's a scale, by the way, it's written on the side that the staff has pulled over and put a pin on there, that's why you can't see it. But the scale that's written there is inaccurate. The young lady who came in and talked about it, it's actually quarter to a foot, it says on the scale, but it's inaccurate. It's actually an eight to the scale. If you do it on an eight, all the numbers read out completely, all the way. I just went ahead and scaled it quickly and you can go out there and do it on an eight and you will see, you get fifteen feet for, for the house on top, you get twenty-six-six for the house down below and it matches the numbers.
Okay.
To me, I think this project has tried to do everything that it has been asked for by DRB one. This community just doesn't want the house, period. It's irrelevant what you built there, they just don't want anything there. And, and, and as it is, ma'am. I think, I think the house is twenty-five feet. It is no different, if this was a R-one-R area, that means if this was in northwest Glendale and the pads weren't cut the way they are, you can build that house on a flat land. And the house next to it, if the ground of that house next to it, above it, was in the same level as the house below it, it would have been the same exact height. The roof lines are lining up exactly the same, no different. I live in the flat part of Glen Oaks Canyon and I do have a two-story right next to me within four feet setback. And you know what? Salavi. I mean, I don't have any problems. My neighbors don't look over down to my place. I have very good relationships with all of our neighbors and we'll live happily ever after. And I can actually build a two-story if I want to, but I don't need the space. I don't need to do that. I think what has happened is everybody has gone out of their way and taken things out of context when it comes to the home, the anti-mansionization ordinance. None of you were there. I was. It basically said, we will not go out there and dictate to people what style or what type of house they will build. We are not communist in here. People have a right to choose the design of a house they like. Some like modern, some like Spanish, some like Mediterranean, some like ranch. That's the way it goes. Some of us eat at Burger King and some of us eat at.
McDonald's.
McDonald's. I wouldn't eat at McDonald's. I don't like that hamburger, but some people like that. So, hey, let everybody get whatever they want. But the bottom line with all of these projects was, what is the maximum heights? We talked about this for two years and if you think this is contagious, nothing. We had rooms filled with people who came down, took pens and circled things around and they said, this is what they want on their area. And everybody picked what they wanted on their FARs. Staff, and Mr. Wolfgang remembers that, staff didn't get to say, you can't have that. Mr. McKenna says, whatever you want is what you get. And came in, Glen Oaks Canyon came in, they said point four oh, Northwest came in, said point three oh, and Adams Hills said point four five and so on and so forth. That's how all those numbers were decided. All those numbers were decided on the basis of allowing people to take their existing house and be able to double it. That was the criteria. That's what it was done. This house is less than what it's allowed to be. Now, yes, it's true that there is, a section in the zoning code talks about compatibility, but the compatibility deals with the massing and scale of the building and it does not talk about size. There is nowhere it's written size. If you read that ordinance carefully, it will say massing and scale, it would say the different fenestrations, the windows, the colors, the so on and so forth, and that's what you look for. Are there, are there, are there any, let's say, parking in the front or are predominant parking is in the back? Where is the location of the garages and so on and so forth? So, that's what I looked for. I looked around on the neighborhood and I drove that neighborhood several times and there were some people who stuck their head out and they go, what's that red car going up and down the street? It was me. There are houses that have their garages in the front. There are some houses that have their garage that is turned in the front. There are two stories in the front. There are split levels. This happens to be a split level. On the right-hand side, it's a one-story building. On the left-hand side, with the exception of the garage, which is in many, there's several other ones in front, you have a garage on the bottom, which you can't use, then you have your second story on top, which is actually one level. So, that's how this is designed. So, to me, this is not a two-story stack that you have two thousand square foot footprint, another two thousand square foot footprint, and you could use four thousand of it. It doesn't work that way. It steps out all over the place. So, as I look at that, I think the colors that they have changed and modified to is a little bit more in keeping with what's around. I like the fact that the shingles have been changed instead of being just roof tiles that are round, that it's not a predominant use in that area and they have gone to more of a concrete shingle type of thing or concrete tile type of thing, which is more flat. The squaring off of all the windows and, and trying to make it fit within the so-called style of the neighborhood as much as possible. So, when I look at that, my main criteria was, I wasn't going to approve a project that was removing more than fifty percent and, and not following the setback rules. So, I wanted to put the test on and we realized that that is inaccurate, so that has been caught. So, this house complies with all the other zoning standards. I think that's the word that we should use, zoning standards. The setbacks are within the standards. The height is within the standard. Actually, height is ten feet below the standard. Okay? So, the FAR, eh, you're maxing it. That's what it is. This house is never going to add another addition to it. This is it. You're done. So, one good thing is nobody's going to be building on this house again. It's done. It's finished. It's maxed out to its final numbers. And the design, I don't find the design unappealing. I think the design is pretty much consistent throughout. It's a lot better than the previous designs that I saw that as they came through the design review, there was a lot of mishmash and so everything has been brought together to kind of work all together. So, that's, that's where I stand on this thing at this point.
Okay. Who's next? Want me to talk?
Well, I'll talk.
Okay. So, we can go home.
I, I'm having difficulty actually. I, I understand the house is within, I understand the house is within the zoning guidelines in terms of the legality of what they can build, but it's just, it's just difficult when, whenever I see that someone is trying to maximize to what they're trying to build as mu, as much as they can, it just, it just seems to be overdone. And looking at the square footages of the houses on the street, the largest one, and only, there's only one house that's the three thousand square foot range, which is the two-thirty-one Sleepy Hollow, which has a square footage of thirty-four sixty. That's the only one. The rest are two thousand, twenty-four hundred, twenty-eight hundred. So, when we talk about compatibility issues, there's certainly an issue of compatibility in terms of size, massing and scale. And as I was reading some of the design review issues earlier, design review boards issues earlier, on two occasions, they addressed the massing and size and the house came back with the, without any changes to the massing and size. So, I'm not inclined to approve it at this point. I would like to see the house go back, maybe do a two-car garage within the thirty-four hundred square foot area for the house. I think I would feel more comfortable with that.
Sir? Mr. Yusefian?
And, and, and it's fine with me, Mr. Manukian, where I'm having some difficulties and I wouldn't mind if it was a smaller house. My issue is, if this is the direction we're going and we have, we have been going this way with some of these projects and also design reviews be moving in that direction, then I think it would be fair to just go out there and reduce the FAR in that whole canyon. Go from point four to point three. So, whoever buys that property knows what is the maximum they can develop. Because a lot of people buy the house because they think they can build this thing. So, let's not kid ourselves and not, let's not put ourselves through all this pain and suffering. Reduce the number to point three oh, and if this was point three oh, it would be a thirty-one hundred square foot house. But I have a feeling that the neighborhood still would complain.
Well, I don't know.
You don't know?
We'll, we'll, we'll get to it when we get there.
Mr. Magari?
Okay, back, I, I have had a chance to look at some more information and it's, I mean, in my mind, it is clear that there are two-story homes on that street, perhaps not on the even side of the street, but clearly immediately across the street, there's a string of homes from two-sixty-three, two-fifty-three, two-forty-nine, two-forty-one, two-eleven. So, as far as a, a second story is concerned, I do not have a problem with a second story. However.
No. No. Please, you're out of order. He's speaking.
But.
No.
There seems to be a buzz somewhere that, that, that information is wrong, but I've gone through the pictures and the pictures, the pictures do seem to support. Now, whether you're going to call it a split or a second store, a two-story, I think you're splitting hairs at that point. But now, in keeping with that, and I want to be consistent in my analysis here, I'm also forced to look at the, the square footage of the homes. And the average square footage for that block is two thousand three hundred square feet. I think a home that maxes out at four thousand is too big for that area. And personally, I would be willing to, and of course, we're not saying you have to build at the average, no. But if there was a home that came with a smaller square footage at the thirty-five hundred mark, which would not require the third-car garage, is that correct? Is that the?
Thirty-four ninety-nine.
Thirty-four ninety-nine.
Thirty-four ninety-nine. I would feel extremely comfortable in approving a house of that nature. So, to summarize, looking at the neighborhood, two stories are okay, but four thousand square feet is not okay. It's got to come closer to the average to be compatible with the rest of the homes. And I'm hoping that in the reduction of that square footage, something can be done to, to work with the Williams to not be as, it doesn't look to be extremely intrusive and obtrusive to them, but something can be done to ease their line of sight and hopefully they'll be good neighbors. I hate to see a neighborhood up in arms over this, but.
From my standpoint, there was an editorial in the paper the other day that said that I hit the nail on the head when I talked about compatibility. What one believes is compatible, another can say is not compatible. In this case, I don't find a house like this as compatible because of the architectural design or all the other homes on the block or ranch, because the lower end of the canyon down there where the tower roofs are down on Sleepy Hollow was put in, I don't know, the twenties or the thirties. When Sleepy Hollow was then extended up the hill, Sleepy Hollow Place was put in. Those homes were built probably twenty years or more later. Totally different architectural style with the two stories on the uphill slope and the one stories on the other side being only one story. So, I can't accept it because the compatibility factor, the size, doubling the size of the house, being the most massive house up there, doesn't work for me. So, even if they decrease the size because it is still Spanish, which I love, my, my house is Spanish, it's not compatible at all there. We'll never be able to define compatibility well enough that even the five of us non-architects will agree on it or the design review boards. It's like the word significant or substantial. How do you define it? But I will tell you what I said yesterday at a meeting. Trends change and in, and in our society and in Glendale, we're seeing a trend. And that is the fact that, being a built-out city, we're starting to see more single-family homes that were built in the thirties and forties, fifteen, eighteen hundred square feet, being bought at a very good price and doubled in size or more. And then, and then sold if, if they wish, at very significant increases in price. I said yesterday that I firmly believe that this trend is going to increase. I've been seeing it. And I believe we got to go back and look at the FAR and the way it's computed. It's allowing these kind. There's one coming up at Els Maralda. It's five acres. The FAR on that mansion that they're putting in, there are six bedrooms with a theater, et cetera, et cetera, is point zero eight. And the ratio there is four-five. We are computing the FAR wrong. And if the intent is to send a message to the design review boards and anybody else in the city that smaller houses are going to have to be built, we have to compute the floor area ratio in a different way. In addition, I've become convinced we need a view ordinance of some sort. I don't want to see a view ordinance that's punitive because one neighbor turning in another neighbor to get even with them. You can't get to that state. But view ordinance, none here. The one up on Sinaloa Ray, none there. But if people with their lifestyles today, two parents, two kids, that means four cars in the family, not like the old days, it means three bedrooms, it means a family room, it means an exercise room, that's not the way I grew up here. My sister and I slept in the same room for ten years before we finally could have our own rooms.
You don't need to know that.
There was only two, yeah, well, that, no, when we were little kids, five, six, seven, we didn't have our own bedrooms. It was a totally different lifestyle. There was no family room in my house. Times have changed. So, yes, the people that are coming into Glendale today are going to want bigger houses. I don't deny that at all. But you got to send a message, what is permissible that this city, that the people that live here are willing to accept? They cannot accept nothing. That's not acceptable. But you can't, in my view, we can't allow homes to be doubled in size or tripled in size in these areas. It's, it's just not right in my mind. That's why I think we have to tighten down the FAR, put in some kind of a view ordinance. Those are two things, those are two messages we can send to the public and to the design review boards in how to look at these sized houses. Mr. Yusefian said it was point three. Well, depending on how you calculate it, it might come out to be .28, .29. It may be on an individual lot basis. But when we put the FAR in a few years ago, we didn't have near the problems we're having today with people trying to take these small, single-family homes and, in essence, "mansionize them." "Mansionizism." I can't even say it. So this is not compatible to me. And I think that we're going to have to go back and look at a problem that is reoccurring bigger and bigger. And if anybody can tell me how we can define the word "compatible," I'll be perfectly willing to listen because it's in the eyes of the beholder. And every time that the public decides to peel and leave it in the hands of five non-architects sitting up here, you're taking a risk. Because we're not going to agree. But we certainly can agree on size. We can agree on view, if such things exist. So that's a long way of saying that I can't support this size. And I will be pushing for a revisit on the FAR and some kind of a view ordinance when it gets to us, the Verdugo Woodlands.
Mr. Catarina, Mr. Manukian.
Okay. Well, what I said the last time around, this family's lived in this house for a long time, so they didn't just buy it and plan to add on. So they're well within their rights, wanting, as I see the adult children here, they're well within their rights wanting to add on to their house, to make it more compatible with their lifestyle, family room, master bedroom, whatever it is that they want to do. So I agree with that. But I don't think this is the right design, and it is too massive. So they just need to go back to the drawing boards, try to find something that will be compatible with the neighborhood. And I guarantee you, if you run that by 100 architects, not one of them is going to say that that is a split-level home. And that's not even close to the rest of this neighborhood. So I mean, they just have to look at the other homes, get an architect, or the gentleman seems to be a designer himself, look at the other homes on that street, because that is the neighborhood, and see what will fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. And then I'm sure they're going to get it approved at a reasonable size and something that kind of matches and fits in with the rest of the neighborhood. It's not going to be the same. Those homes were built in the '60s and '50s. It's going to be different. But at least it'll be a modern adaptation of what that neighborhood is about. This is just not it. So I'm ready to move, um, 8B1.
Okay. And Mr. Manukian?
During the last hearing, there was a question or an issue raised regarding the deed restriction. Was that ever settled?
Deed?
Deed restriction.
The CCNRs.
Oh, the CCNRs.
The CCNR? Was that ever...
I just...
No, I'm just curious. Was that ever settled, did you guys?
It will be settled in a court of law.
So it hasn't gotten there yet?
For the public at home, it'll be, been told it'll be settled in a court of law.
Okay.
And for the record, I like that design pretty much. I like Spanish. I like Spanish Mediterranean. Go look at my house. That's what it is. This is the land of the Verdugos. Okay. It's been moved. Is there a second?
What is the motion?
8B1.
8B1.
8B1 is to sustain the AP and deny the project.
Mr. Catarina moved it. Is there a second?
Let me raise a point of order on 8B1 regarding the whole assessment appeals panel, where we discovered that one of the participants had a conflict. Are we treading on any problem with that regard?
Again, no, because this is a de novo hearing, and so you're basically hearing the evidence anew, and so...
So when you say "sustaining..."
Basically cleaning the slate by having the hearing and acting on your own.
Can we send this back to the design review board for redesign?
Okay. Who wants to take this? There's not going to be a second. Somebody take it.
Do I have a choice?
Okay. I second the motion.
This is sustaining the...
I'd like to make a competing motion.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion. That motion is to continue this to a date certain whereby the applicant can come to us with a smaller square-footage home, not to exceed 3,500 square feet.
Two-car garage.
With a two-car garage.
Can we send it back to the design review? Because I don't want to deal with the design issues. I'd like to see the design review board deal with design issues again.
You can deny it.
It doesn't matter. In the end of the day, it's going to stop in here anyway.
The motion we have is...
I'll second that substantive motion.
Well, I want to have a vote on the first one. I'm not with...
No, you have to do the substantive.
Point of order, you have to take substantive motion first.
It's been moved.
Is your date certain?
Let me inquire of an architect as to how quickly they can return to us with those changes. Sixty days?
May?
Sixty days?
Ninety days. He's not going to be able to do dozens of two days. Do it in 90 days.
90 days.
My only comment would be to have, you would want to have the hearing, a hearing again on the changes to the, or at least public comment on those changes.
Oh, yeah.
They are pretty substantial.
Definitely.
Wait. When is the public going to get to buy-in if this motion passes?
It would be at the date that you're continuing this matter to.
A new public hearing?
It should be. It should be, yes, because you're really changing the...
And you will be available for the public to see this stuff.
And would bypass the design review boards.
That's correct.
If it passes. Okay. Roll call on the substantive motion.
So it's moved by council member Najarian, seconded by Yusefian. Council members Manukian.
Okay. Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
No.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
No. Okay. I guess that concludes it. 90 days, it'll be back.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to let the architect know one thing. The word "ranch..." I keep saying that. The word "ranch-style," you know, I think something of that will probably blend in a little bit better.
Okay. That's it on that item?
Just for the record, the matter will be brought back to the closest meeting, which is the 90th day from the matter, unless the applicant requests it, or the applicant, I guess, requests a continuance, which will be brought back for your consideration.
Fine.
Okay. There's nothing else on this issue. It'll be 90 days, hence, closest Tuesday after 90 days. You can figure out what day that is. Notify all the respective parties.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I think maybe we should ask the architect to turn in the documents at least two weeks before that 90 days so the people have access to go there and they can look at the stuff and, you know...
I think Mr. Gagnon's asking for three weeks.
Yeah. Okay. Fine.
Okay.
And so please keep touch with the Williams family and the home up there. If there's any way that modifications can be made which would alleviate some of their concerns, that would be greatly productive to this.
It'll be helpful if you go to your neighbors and show them the stuff and then...
Did you hear that?
Okay. Does that conclude this item? We already voted. Okay. What's next, please?
There's no new business?
Anything else?
Yes, there is. I move that the offer of Bagrad Dabud Masih buy and through his attorney, Aram Martinian, to compromise and settle his claim against the city of Glendale for the sum of $5,000, including all costs and attorney's fee, is hereby approved and accepted, and the director of finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the receipt of a properly executed release and indemnity agreement. Second.
Moving seconded. Roll call, please.
Council members Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Subsequent.
And we stand adjourned at 9:20 p.m.